I'd like to call the Village Board Meeting to Order. This is number 3,077. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Abernathy.
President.
Kim.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Semple.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Boss.
Here.
Fantastic. Tonight, we're going to have an honor guard post the colors in this inaugural meeting here in this facility. So would everyone please rise at this time?
To the left, to the right, to the left. And salute.
Would everyone please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Face.
And you may be seated. Before we get going with the agenda, I wanted to first just take a few moments and initially welcome everyone to the New Village Hall. This is a fantastic evening. This evening has been anticipated and planned for by so many people over so many years. It truly is just a fantastic evening. So many people were involved in this. It was a huge team. Time will not allow us to go over everyone that was involved in this. And we're going to have an open house on September 6th to Saturday. Time yet to be announced. But at that time, we'll have the whole lower floor here will be open for the public to go through. Upstairs, Weston will have theirs open, I understand. And it'll be just a great time. We'll have plenty of recognition for everyone that was involved here. But there are a few people that we want to acknowledge that are just, we just have to. It's just so important. First of all, we wouldn't be here tonight in this facility if it wasn't for a partnership that we have with the firm upstairs called Weston Solutions. And we have five people here, I understand, this evening from Weston, and I've seen some of them. Scott Springer's a Vice President. Scott, can you raise your hand so we can see? There he is. Steve Clough, Vice President. There he is. Steve Bosco, Profit Center Sales Manager. There he is. The construction manager in charge of building this whole thing, he's the point man, Rick Swerengen. Rick Swerengen, there he is. And then Sally Bartz, Vice President, Weston. There she is. We greatly appreciate our relationship with you guys. It's a great evening, and thank you for your relationship with us, your partnership and your friendship as well. Also tonight, maybe you've seen him running around doing the audio and sound. Rick Cushing is a local vendor, and I wanted to just give a shout out to the other local vendors that participated in the construction of Village Hall. There are several of them, and I think Dawn's going to have a nice article about those that participated in this. This dais right here was made locally. The plumbing was done by a local vendor. And there are several more. And so look for that article in the fall issue of the newsletter. And then finally, I'm going to talk about John Lebado a little bit, and then he wants to have a few words, and then we'll get into the program tonight. But the way we're set up here is that the Board of Trustees hires a village administrator to pretty much be the point person running the village. And he is invested with a tremendous amount of authority and a tremendous amount of responsibility. And so this last year, maybe you've noticed, we've had a lot of things going on, pretty high stakes issues besides building this. And I just want to express a tremendous amount of appreciation to John, plus he had a rookie mayor in my rookie year going on at the same time to deal with. But lots of issues going on, and then besides that, the building of a Village Hall of this size and caliber. And, you know, I think at the end of the day, you know, just a great job well done. We came in under budget and ahead of schedule, and you just can't ask for anything more than that. So could we give a hand to John Lebado? And ... I think he had a few words to say as well.
Well, first of all, thank you. That is, certainly it's not done. I wasn't the one here every day making sure that things got done when they did. We had a tremendous partner, as you said, with Weston, and that was a big help. But I think the, first and foremost that comes to mind is the vision of the mayor and the village board, and that speaks to the prior board as well, to put together something of this significance. I mean, it is quite remarkable that they had this vision to join in this public-private partnership to build a building like this. And it was, I feel fortunate and lucky to just happen to be here at the time that this was going on. And it doesn't happen very often in somebody's career, and it, you know, I think here it happens about once every 80 years or so. So, I mean, I was, you just can't ask for more. And the board's support all the way along has been tremendous. But I would like to, as the mayor said, there's just a tremendous amount of people that goes into a project of this size. And so you can't sit here and thank everybody that participated. I told Chief Sashko, I said, "The next fire chief that comes along is going to have to know something about furniture." And Tim happens to have been in that line of work many years ago, and it turned out to be a great asset in helping us weed through that. But I can go around the room, and everybody that's sitting in this room from the department has had something to do with the success of where we are today. But I would be remiss if I didn't call out one person in particular, and that's our Building Director, Pete Shupkagel. I know he's over there shaking his head, but, you know, there's been many a times I've been pulling my hair out and I go in his office and, or send him pictures, or, you know, typical stuff that goes on during a project. But Pete has been just steadfast in his working relationship with Weston and has just kept all the parts moving from our side. And he's done that on top of all his other duties, and that's just been a tremendous asset. Not only did we save money by doing our kind of construction management in-house, he's just done a phenomenal job, and I can't thank him enough for what he's done. And I've got one more thing I would like to present to Mr. Shupkagel. And I'll show it to everybody, but let me first read it.
I'm supposed to have the agenda in front of me, and instead I have the camera looking
This is "Presented to Pete Shupkagel in appreciation for exceptional achievement."
right at me and I looking at myself.
Now I need to put in my password.
And there's a date. It says "The Mundeline Village Hall," and the date on it is June 23rd, 2014, and that's
All right. Good.
the date that we occupied the building.
There we go.
And so that's tremendous, so I'd like to give a round of applause to Pete.
All right. All right. So let's get going on the agenda. We are going to move on to number four, Approval of Minutes.
And I'm not going to take it out of the box, but it's just a nice little token that he'll
First is the Village Board Meeting from June 23rd, Exhibit One. I need a motion to approve those minutes.
have something to put on his bookshelf and maybe share with his grandkids, right?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, now, I've got my new seating chart here. So that was a motion by Boss.
And, but it's just a little, it's a crystal thing that's engraved with our new logo,
Second by?
Kim.
Kim. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
as a matter of fact, on top, the star.
Boss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, Approval of Minutes for the Appropriations Ordinance Public Hearing from June 23rd, Exhibit Two.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Kim, second by Sullivan. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Motion carries. This takes us to the time in the evening when we have public commentary. Does anyone wish to address the board at this time? Just indicate by raising your hand. We have a few. Okay. Just come on up and go to the mic, and then make sure you tell the clerk your name and address, if you could. Joe, you want to go first? Okay.
Good evening. I don't have a lot to say. First of all, I'd say congratulations to the Village of Mundeline for a wonderful building. I didn't believe it would ever happen in my lifetime. I've been to a lot of meetings and everything, and with the year 2008, when the economy fell apart and a lot happened in this country, Mundeline kept pushing ahead, and you got the project done. And I would like to congratulate you. It turned out very well. The only thing that bothers me a little bit, I have to walk further now to get to the meeting. Unless I know there's a secret parking place, I don't understand the one in the front. I was way out in the outer lot, and you need a clock. You need a clock. But my one question is, has anything come up yet on the property over there on Route 60? Across the street from?
Across the street from Target?
Correct.
Yeah, the status is still the same as when you were here last time. I think we, in that we have a retailer that's interested in that spot, and they are not ready yet to go public, but they are definitely investigating the possibility of building on that lot.
The corn looks good, so.
Yeah.
Let's hope we have a few more years of that corn. Thank you very much, and congratulations on a job well done in the building.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, go ahead. Mr. Springer?
Scott Springer. Place of business is the Mundeline Village Hall. Mayor Lands, trustees, Administrator Lebado, and your wonderful team. I just wanted to say just a few words today in thanks on behalf of Weston. The people that we have here today, Steve Clough and Sally Bartz, are the general managers of the area that we serve right now. I think most people have met Steve Clough, at least as we were going through the negotiations with the village for our public-private partnership. And Sally is continuing to drive our business forward to serve our clients, including Mundeline. Steve Bosco was the individual who helped with all the environmental issues when the original industrial building was here, so that in fact we could develop this subdivision and the Village Hall. And Rick, Rick Swerengen, who many of you have seen running around and coordinating with Pete, the construction of the Village Hall, they both, both Pete and Rick, put their blood, sweat, and tears into making this Village Hall what it is. But why are we celebrating today? And I'm just going to say something very short. It's a milestone. We're celebrating that because it's an edifice to local government. We're celebrating it because it's a milestone in investing for tomorrow. And this is the start of the redevelopment of this area and to become the heartbeat of the village. So that's why we're celebrating. We're very, very grateful. Myself personally, Weston, very, very grateful for this lasting partnership that we have and for the trust that you've put in us to be your partner. Lastly, I want to tell you that Weston will strive to be a great tenant here, a friendly neighbor, a go-to business partner, a responsible member of the business community, and last but not least, a local company that really makes a difference in the lives of the residents of Mundeline. So those are our goals, and again, thank you so much. I just wanted to ask our members, did I miss anything?
Nope.
We got it? We got it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hi, Ernie Capone and a group of others from Butterfield Road, Jim Cooper, Sylvester Landscape, Glader, Joan Glader, Glader Property. There's a sewer word on the street about a sewer project to come up our street, and the timing is very tough for us. We have no, I personally have no cash flow on my property and no way to pay for a sewer project. I don't know that it's going to help me sell the project. There's very little to know about it from what we have.
Tell us anything you need to confirm. I never have paperwork to, you know, the property received at all.
The notes I took on it and the letter I got shows 1,500 feet of sewer pipe. I measured it by the line that's on the drawing, and it's actually closer to 1,700 feet. It's quite a discrepancy when they're talking $300 a foot. So, Jim Cooper.
My thought is, is, you know, the building industry's been so devastated the last seven years, and I think it's going to continue. I think we all believe that progress is needed, the sewer has to go in one day. I just think we have to look at the timing on this, because I too have a cash flow problem on paying for the sewer, because I rent residential houses on that property. So I hope the board takes a look at the timing and the economics of where we're at right now. Five, six years from now, yeah, maybe it'll work. But I think where we're at, it's going to be devastating, because there's only about 11 properties paying for that process. So, and we'd probably like to get some other time to sit down with you and discuss it further, instead of taking up your time tonight. So, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, Mark Sylvester, Sylvester Associates. I agree also with the, our other members here, our owners. Timing is never good. We all know we need the sewer. We want the sewer, but it's finding out a way where, maybe another way or how we can pay for it. A wish it would have gone in, a partial would have gone in when the road went in. Easement was taken at that time. Now they want to give us more, take more easement from us. So we need to talk about it. We need to see how it can work. We all know we need it, we want it, but it's just a matter of timing. When it can happen, when it would happen, what it would cost us, over how much time, kind of go from there. Thank you.
Yeah.
We agree on everything, except we never even received anything. Ernie had called us and let us know about the meeting tonight and about all that was going on, so we can be included and get some papers sent out. It seems like we're a lost property in between. So, but otherwise, we do agree with them, the economy and the timing and all that. Okay?
Yeah, I could just maybe speak to that just a little bit, just for the benefit of you people that came out tonight to express your opinions about that. This came up at, I think, the last board meeting or the board meeting before last. As we were moving through the engineering design, we discovered that there was a problem with trying to squeeze the sewer into the public right-of-way on Butterfield Road. And one of the options was, and we thought one of the better options was to move it outside of the right-of-way into an easement on your property. And the board then asked us to communicate with all the property owners out there, and there was a letter that went out, I believe, about 10 days ago, maybe, something like that. If we missed a property owner, that was inadvertent. But there's been no talk of timing on the, when. We've got several funding options. They could be special service area, special assessment, could be recapture, it could be some public benefit that draws down some of that cost to that sewer. All of those things have yet to be fully vetted out. But the first step was, if nobody wanted to give us an easement, then, you know, we might abandon the project or find some other way of doing it without easements. So this initial contact with property owners wasn't intended to elicit comment about an easement, not necessarily about when do we pay for it, how do we pay for it, and all that. We simply just haven't gotten there yet. We...
If there is an easement, is it, that going to building consideration? Would the building set that line change if there's an easement given to the building?
I don't know the specific question to that or answer to that, but I know that we faced similar problems with our project on Holly Street, and we figured out a way that it didn't impact future setbacks on Holly Street. So it's something, I just don't have the specific answer, but we're aware of that concern.
I mean, building easement's one thing, it's changing setbacks, because with granting an easement.
Right.
Is a different role.
Right. Yeah, I think right now we're just at a point of, are you receptive to granting an easement? And if you are, then there's a lot more dialogue that has to go on in terms of how do we go about paying for it.
We don't want to tie up here tonight. You guys have a lot of things going on. Congratulations on your building, and please keep us informed.
Okay.
Anyone else wish to address the board at this time? Okay. All right, we'll close the floor and move on. The first item under Presentations and Awards is a proclamation for Coach Todd Perola, Mundeline High School, for 500 career wins with the Mundeline High School Varsity Baseball Team. This is Exhibit Three. I'm going to read this and say a few words, and we'll have Coach come on up. And I see Kevin Meyer, the new Superintendent of the High Schools here. Welcome. So this is a mayoral proclamation recognizing Todd Perola for 500 career wins with the Mundeline High School Varsity Baseball Team. Whereas Todd Perola began his coaching career with the Mundeline High School Baseball Team in 1995, and whereas in 20 years as head varsity baseball coach, Coach Perola's teams have won eight IHSA regional championships, five conference titles, and two sectional titles. And whereas in 2014, the Mundeline Mustangs Baseball Team set a school record with 36 wins in the season and won the regional and sectional titles. And whereas on May 13th, 2014, Coach Perola earned his 500th career win as head varsity coach of the Mundeline Mustangs Baseball Team by defeating rival Stevenson High School 12 to 2. And whereas Coach Perola has been a role model for players and his peers for 20 years, and whereas Coach Perola has assembled a great coaching staff who have combined to make the Mundeline baseball program one of the best programs in the state of Illinois. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and Board of Trustees of the Village of Mundeline, Illinois, that Coach Todd Perola is hereby recognized by the Village of Mundeline upon the completion of his 20th year as the head baseball coach of the Mundeline Mustangs Baseball Team and commended for achieving the 500-win mark on May 13th, 2014. It is with deep gratitude and appreciation that we thank you for dedication to the student athletes of Mundeline High School. You know, there are so many good things one can talk about with regards to Coach Perola, and I had a huge list, and whittling it down is difficult, but I would say this, for those, some of you may not know, he is really an institution in our town, in our baseball town. He gets involved with the 7th and 8th graders. He has a great staff, and I'll read their names. Ray Barucki, Jeff Suino, Clay Kovak, great pitching instructor, Neil McLaughlin. You know, Ray Barucki, he was doing camps with Coach Perola, and the other institution we have is his baseball camp for the Little Leaguers. The place is just flooded with little kids, and Ray Barucki was doing it for you, 14 years ago, my oldest was over there at his camp and came home with a little cap, you know, for doing well in batting and everything. The other institution he has, every February, he has the Little League coaches come to the lower gym, and he'll conduct drills. There's no field house, and he's competing with opponents with field houses. He gets them all in the lower gym, and you'll watch the Little League coaches, T-ballers on up, T-ball coaches on up, their mouths just drop as you watch the drills going on, and with dozens of players in precision, timing, executing drill after drill after drill, with the hardballs flying around this gym in tremendous precision and skill. And we all just stand on the balcony, just shocked at how he could assemble that kind of precision from these kids. It's amazing. Finally, I would say, my kids have been on his teams, my boy plays for his golf team right now, but, and I know a ton of parents, hundreds over the years. He's tough but loved. It's not a walk in the park to be up to play for Coach Perola. Otherwise, he wouldn't, if it was, he wouldn't be where he is with 500 wins. At the same time, though, I've never seen a coach that's so tough be so loved by the players. And I hear it at home from my kids, I've had six go through Mundeline High School, and he has a real gift. And you're just an institution, and we thank you for everything you've done for Mundeline High School baseball and for the players and students. Come on and get it here.
I'm very lucky to be at Mundeline. I've had the opportunity to go to places to work in the community like Mundeline. Kids don't mind being held accountable. Parents have been very supportive. The Little League's been very supportive. The Villains have been very supportive. Parents don't mind expectations. And in Mundeline, with the diversity that we have there, it's a great place for me. And there's a lot of places I couldn't work, but I will say that the work ethic in this community has been very, very beneficial to our Mundeline baseball program. And thank you. I'm kind of humbled, such an important day that I'm getting recognized. Shouldn't happen. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right. All right. Next, we have another proclamation. This is a mayoral proclamation commending Fire Battalion Chief Kevin McKinley for his service to the Village of Mundeline. Whereas Battalion Chief Kevin McKinley has served the Fire Department, Village, State of Illinois, and community with professionalism, integrity, and character for 37 years. And whereas Battalion Chief Kevin McKinley began his service as a paid-on-call firefighter in July of 1977. And whereas Battalion Chief Kevin McKinley started his full-time career with the department as a firefighter, paramedic.
Not to say much, but it's kind of a humble experience for me. I'm very lucky to be at Mundaline. I've had the opportunity to go to places to work in the community like Mundaline. Kids don't mind being held accountable. Parents have been very supportive. The Little League's been very supportive. The Villains have been very supportive. Parents don't mind expectations. And in Mundaline, with the diversity that we have there, it's a great place for me. And there's a lot of places I couldn't work, but I will say that the work ethic in this community has been very, very beneficial to our Mundaline baseball program. And thank you. I'm kind of humbled, such an important day that I'm getting recognized. Shouldn't happen. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right. All right. Next, we have another proclamation. This is a mayoral proclamation commending Fire Battalion Chief Kevin McKinley for his service to the Village of Mundaline. Whereas Battalion Chief Kevin McKinley has served the fire department, village, state of Illinois, and community with professionalism, integrity, and character for 37 years. And whereas Battalion Chief Kevin McKinley began his service as a paid-on-call firefighter in July of 1977. And whereas Battalion Chief Kevin McKinley started his full-time career with the department as a firefighter/paramedic in July of 1984. And whereas Battalion Chief Kevin McKinley was promoted to the rank of Fire Lieutenant in March of 1994, serving as a company officer. And whereas Battalion Chief Kevin McKinley was promoted to the rank of Captain in October of 2001 and served as a shift commander. And whereas Battalion Chief Kevin McKinley was appointed to the rank of Battalion Chief in December of 2007, serving as a shift commander. And whereas Battalion Chief Kevin McKinley embodies the mission of the department by serving our community with professionalism, integrity, and pride, and has provided leadership, guidance, and vision for the future of the department as a legacy of his career. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and Board of Trustees of the Village of Mundaline that Battalion Chief Kevin McKinley is hereby honored for his service to the village over the past 37 years and his dedication to the safety of the community. He's greatly admired and appreciated. Sir, raise your hand. There you go. There he is. Chief, go ahead.
The mayor said I have to say a few words. Get a photo op first, Rick. Perfect. No, we're certainly honored. Kevin will be retiring this Friday. You look at 37 years of service, and it's really remarkable. And what he has done for our organization, and really what was in the proclamation of preparing the future, it was kind of funny, you go through those factoids of what happened in 1977 when he was a rookie firefighter and the Commodore computer came out and Star Wars had just debuted and Atari was out there, Smokey and the Bandit was a movie that came out. So it's pretty amazing to think that far back, and yet it's a blink of an eye in our service careers, both with police and fire. So we're going to celebrate Saturday morning at 8:00 in the morning. We work 24-hour shifts. So Kevin will report to duty on Friday at 8:00 in the morning, and then we will have a walkout ceremony Saturday morning at 8:00 at our headquarters station, the former village hall, our village board meeting location, and at 1,000 North Middle Oathian Road, and honor Kevin for his dedication and really commitment to this community. And I say commitment because it's within our mission statement, and it didn't matter what project was going on or what service need there was. Kevin was the kind of guy, and is the kind of guy, that continues to dedicate himself. Unfortunately, he's going to be moving to Tucson, so we won't get to see him as much anymore and his wife Patty, but they have, they've always been very supportive of this organization, and it's that type of a personality and that type of a commitment that really creates the profile of what we do. So Chief, I congratulate you. We'll say a lot more on Saturday morning, and thank you very much.
Okay. Moving along, we have Item C under Presentation Awards. We have a, that's right, we're going to proceed with the presentation regarding the Lake Ridge development in Rainy Developments. Sir?
My name's Tom Burney, and I thank you for letting us appear before you on this very special occasion. And while this is a very small development in your wonderful town, perhaps it's part of the momentum that you're building here tonight. This is a stalled development, the Lake Ridge Town Homes. I represent Mr. Ken Buckman of Rainy Investments. He would like to move forward. He's purchased the ground. It has nine completed but unfinished townhouses, about 33 townhouses on land where it hasn't been developed. What he wants to do is move forward and complete the interiors so he can make these units ready for occupancy. He wants to complete the subdivision improvements that make sense to complete, and we're working with your Director of Development in terms of that. We're committed to doing both of those things simultaneously. What Mr. Buckman has presented to you is a summary. It gives you some examples of what he's doing, plans to do interior-wise at the Lake Ridge Town Homes. He's under contract with a well-respected seasoned land developer. We'd be back here when that diligence period's over. We've wanted to let Mr. Buckman tell you what he wants to do, what his plans are for the ground, and we hope to be back before you on the 28th. Your village attorney and Director of Development have been very accommodating to us in terms of responding to some documents we've prepared, and we'd like to get back here on the 28th and finalize this agreement. In the meantime, we have recognized it's an unusual request in terms of how the community operates, but we'd like to be able to get started on the building permit process, actually issuing building permits if in the center in between now and the 28th, we have satisfied the requirements for a building permit, with the complete understanding that there's no certificate of occupancy until we have inked the land, sorry, the Third Amendment. You know, what we're doing is looking to take a stalled project, which has been stalled for 16 years, put this back in the market, have it become a tax generating use, and we'd ask you for your consideration. Mr. Buckman, would you like to just briefly, given the evening that we're appearing here tonight, just talk about what you want to do with the ground?
Thank you. It smells new in here. I don't want to take up too much time tonight, other than to formally introduce myself to the entire community and give you a chance to ask any potential pertinent questions so that we make sure that our group continues to move as fast as possible to get all of you what you need so that we can get through the project quickly. I took the liberty of kind of doing a cheat sheet, Cliff Notes, in front of you, a couple things that if I were you, I think that you'd want to know about me, Rainy Investments, and a couple of quick things that I thought you might want to know about what we specifically are looking to do here at Lake Ridge. In short, we are, we're ready to go. I've got with me here an expert, John Luzinski, who has been on the developer side for many years and done many subdivisions throughout Chicagoline and put in some in Mundaline. I've got my agents, Stephen Heather Angerman back here, who are also the general contractors on the project, and have been interfacing with many individuals in your city for the last couple of months now, and have plenty of local contractors and local subcontractors that are residents of Mundaline that we are going to heavily use on both the build-out, approximately $600,000 worth of build-out in the nine existing units, and the $330,000 of public improvements that will be done on the land as well as the buffer zone. So again, I don't want to take up too much time to give an opportunity, if anybody has got any questions or comments, I'd be happy to answer them and address them. You need the little glow stick thing on.
Yeah. Okay. I do have a question. It shows on your, in the letter that we received, that you wanted to complete the interiors of the nine townhome units.
That is correct.
Okay. So that's all you're asking for, to do the interior? Or do they want to do, start the outside shelves? Because I see two different things.
You're correct, and all I want to do is build out the interiors as fast as possible. In order to do that, that is why we're working through the Third Amendment, which I also have to take on the responsibilities and complete the public improvements, which we are ready to do, as well as I do not intend on building the shelves myself. I am in contract with a respectable builder in the area that will be coming to you with them and their plans and looking for approval. They will build the additional shelves. I am solely looking to build out the nine existing units. There's plenty of ironwork outside.
But then all of the permits aren't done with you, correct?
Trustee Voss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Have you submitted any permits?
We are ready to go in for permit. We cannot go in for permit until we've got the redevelopment agreement done with you the way it's written right now. I understand it.
We intend to submit all the information for this, but what we anticipate is that we would be able to satisfy the requirements for a building permit, but we wouldn't be issued them until the village board had approved the third amendment. That's what we're asking for, a bit of a head start. Satisfy all the requirements for a building permit. We're asking for your blessing for staff to issue us those building permits with the condition that no occupancy certificates be issued until the third amendment is completed. Does that make sense?
I understand what you're asking, whether or not it makes sense is a different question. So you're asking the board tonight to make a recommendation based on your appeal, because we have no plans, we haven't, you haven't submitted any plans, you haven't asked for permits, we have no idea of what it is that you're asking, and that because you haven't come signed this agreement yet, then you won't have put up any surety. So we have no way of making sure that you don't start and stop or do something substandard because you haven't put up any surety, which you will be required to do upon signing the third agreement. Isn't that correct?
We would put up all the surety that the village requires in order to satisfy the looking to complete the development. So that's, that's not an issue. We're not looking to skip the requirement of supplying you with insurance.
I'm just, I'm a little confused. We met how many months ago? Maybe three months ago?
April.
Okay.
April 24th, before I closed on the property, yes.
So I'm just, I mean, you've had plenty of time. I'm not, I'm not really understanding why you are putting this pressure to put what I consider to be your needs above the needs of the community when you've had, I mean, you've had May, June, so you've had two and a half months, which is certainly enough time that you could have submitted some type of plan by now if you really were going to. On the flip side of that, we've been around here long enough to know that owning a parcel for two and a half months isn't really that long to then put the village under pressure to ask to build on.
So maybe there's a misunderstanding, Trustee Voss. We're not changing any plans whatsoever. These are the same exact plans that were pre-approved. That was the whole concept. When I closed on May 15th, that was kind of when the legal clock started and actively engaged Tom, and Tom has actively been working with your city attorney, Mr. Marino, working through the, this is strictly a legal document, not a set of changed plans or in any way changing what the public eye or the community will see. In fact, I believe that it is a substantial improvement to the public because that whole plot of land, which I will be required to immediately do the public improvements as well that everybody will see, will be a substantial difference from the current blight that it is, as well as I need about 60 to 90 days to build out these units. I'm not suggesting that any pressure be put on anybody here because all the liability is mine. If I put $600,000 plus of work into the interiors and $300,000 plus into the public improvements and you don't issue me occupancy certificates, I can't do anything. So at the end of the day, absolutely, I would suggest you hold all the cards. I hold zero cards, and I'm okay with that. I'm good with that. All I want is while the weather is beautiful and every day that goes by out there, I'm missing an opportunity. I don't want snow on the ground the next time that I'm out there actually ready to dig into it. I might not be able to do it till next spring. That's what, so I apologize if there's a misunderstanding that we're submitting plans. We're not changing anything from what all of you approve.
So interior, you're using the exact same materials, exact same everything. Have you made that clear to staff?
They're proposing some changes in their floor plan, and that's why they've engaged in architects. The architect got drawn in the shelves.
Well, okay, so apparently that's not clear to staff. That just answered my question. So if you think that this agreement is going to be done in two weeks, why would we not just wait two weeks?
Something we can get started. Is there any downside to the village not allowing us to proceed with building permits with the condition of no certificates of occupancy? Well, we're not changing anything. We're not asking for any relaxation of the requirements on surety. You know, isn't it a win-win for all of us to get this project moving forward? That's the way that I look at it. You don't look at it that way, but, and I respect it if you don't, but, you know, this is a man, a lot of times people are just, developers don't want to get things done. They're dragging, here's a guy who wants to move forward, get things rolling, get this property back in the building.
Which I applaud. We met before. I'm fully in favor of him finishing this project. I just want to make sure that we're following the legal requirements that we have. So currently, just so everybody understands this, your client has no right to improve this property without that agreement in place.
Zero.
Zero right.
Like I said.
So that places all of us in an awkward position. I'd like to defer to our village attorney maybe to explain this.
Thank you. I'm unfamiliar with. We've had three of these, this is the third, of three projects that had gotten stopped six or seven years ago in the recession and had partially completed buildings and went ahead. One was Tall Grass Bridge, the other was Hickory Woods, and this is the third one. In both of those cases, the staff's practice and policy was to have all the documents signed before building proceeded, to make sure that everybody was on the same page, we were all in agreement. And there is some merit to doing it that way because you have a complete package that's all tied together, and then the building proceeds, the finishing of those unfinished buildings. And as I understand it, this is staff's recommendation at this point to follow that same practice and procedure. However, as I said to Mr. Burney last week, everybody is entitled to come and ask the board specifically for a change in whatever staff's practice and policy is, and it's up to the board. It's the board's discretion as to whether or not, in this particular instance, you want to allow them to go ahead and start this work prior to that Third Amendment to the development agreement being approved.
And Trustee Voss, I just want to clarify that, and poor Victor has been the recipient of multiple calls and emails, that we have been working diligently on this from day one of owning it. When I met you and Trustee Sullivan, I had no legal rights yet because I was strictly looking at the property. And you, both of you thoroughly and correctly warned me that this was coming. So this, none of this is a surprise, and none of this is what I'm told unusual of going through a process like this. That's why I'm simply, I believe that staff would second that we are getting close to the finish line. We've actively been working through everything. The plans are not changing as long as we follow building codes and all the requirements of the city to begin the actual building. Two weeks is a lot to a group like us and what we can pull off, and that's simply the request, not trying to put anybody under any extreme pressure. I plan on being a long-term, you know, valuable member of the community, and I look forward to veteran it either way. We're simply here to make an unusual and not likely to pass request, and I understand that.
Trustee Sullivan?
All set? Okay, thank you. Well, I appreciate your interest in finishing these nine units as well as building the additional units from the ground up. It's the experience of myself and I think most of the people who have negotiated a development agreement, and that once it's in place, nothing happens. In fact, in some instances, though, work has been allowed to start, and it's usually earth-change work at the builder's risk. And of course, since we met two or three months ago, much has had to be done by yourself to acquire title and then get the building... to acquire title and then get the building plans. You couldn't, you couldn't look, you couldn't do anything in regard to plans for the completion until you owned the property, spent a number of weeks perusing the plans, deciding whether this would work for you or not. I really don't have a problem with allowing you to start as long as you're in full agreement that you're the carrier of the risk. That is to say, if you can't agree on the third amendment, you have this work and the money that's, that has created the work down a rattle, and that the delays that will be involved in reaching agreement on the third amendment will just be further expensed to you. So, if that risk is something that you're willing to entail, I have no problem with allowing you to begin.
Is there a children's question, please? Can we answer the children's question? Yes, trustee Sullivan, I, I couldn't agree more, and I, I came here with full understanding that this, this is my financial risk if this doesn't happen. I know as a logical person, I'm not, I don't understand all the legal, as a logical person, I know this is good for the community and I know it's good for me. So, eventually, we're going to come together on this if I can have the work begun, and I'm, I continue because I got to continue to pay everyone else on my side as we move through. I have a, I have a strong interest in continuing this to move as fast as possible. I just don't want to lose any more time. Nobody has done anything wrong. Nobody has at any step held me back. In fact, Victor's been more than accommodating. I'm simply making the request to take additional risk, knowing full well and knowing that it's inevitable that we're going to come to agreement on this.
And your lender is willing to let you assume that risk?
We've actually been through that as part of the, the third, the third amendment and the law.
Okay.
They understand, yes. Thank you.
So, it sounds like there's some openness to letting him do it, right? Okay?
Yes, I'm, I'm in favor.
What I'd like to do is...
Well, I have still some questions.
Okay.
I mean, I've heard a lot about risk being assumed by the builder and owners of the property, and I'm really glad to see that project moving forward. What would be the risks and concern from our side of doing, you know, issuing building permits in advance? I mean, Charlie outlined some of them, but I'm sure that that's not everything.
Well, there's some probably non-legal risks associated with that. One example would be we issued building permits and, and I understand these are going to be for-sale units?
Depending on how the market reacts, probably both.
Yeah, there could be some of that. There could be a risk that we don't come to agreement. I question whether or not the village has the legal authority to deny an occupancy when building codes are met and the building is finished. So, I think there's some potential downside for denying an occupancy when somebody is moving across state or from out of state that comes in and, you know, they're, they've moved in their family here and the village is holding them up because they've been unable to get a third amendment done. I think that carries some real risk. But, on the other hand, I would agree that there is some benefits to having the stalled project move forward. You have a, right now, you have a building that is under roof, windows are in, watertight, and the inside of the building is not finished. There's some exterior work, but not much, and it's, it's been sitting that way for years, and now somebody wants to come in and finish it. I believe as developer believes that we'll probably come to agreement. I think there's a, obviously a benefit to the developer getting this done, otherwise you wouldn't be standing here, and there's certainly a benefit to us getting it done. So, I think the risk, at least in my judgment, may be minimal, but there is that outside risk that we, something happened and we not get that third amendment completed, and then you're going to be faced with, you know, a future homeowner coming in saying, "How come you won't let me move in?" That's going to be hard to, I think it's remote, but possible.
And I would be happy to add a document to the packet, turning over any rights that I might have on that end to add further. Good point, though.
Did I hear you say that, you know, you need like 30 to 90, or 60 to 90 days of good building weather?
Correct. That's the estimate, yeah.
I mean, this is like mid-July, and, you know, we have August, September, October, and frequently November is mild enough to, to build in.
Correct.
So, I'm not sure I'm seeing the urgency of a couple of weeks.
From, from a, a basic pattern of, of sale and rental, once the kids go back to school, the market turns, and it goes into a mild form of hibernation, which increases as the weather gets colder, and until the first weed pops through in the spring, I definitely am at a, at a disability. So, that is, that is the timeline mentally that I've been fighting from the beginning.
So, you're looking...
And that's why my crews are ready to go. The, the bids are in place, the contractors are in place. I mean, you will see activity overnight.
So, it's a sales perspective that you're looking at, not really a building perspective?
Absolutely. It's a timing, timing.
It's a business...
Absolutely.
Issue.
No question.
Okay. I, I, all right, do you need 30 to 90 days to finish?
Sixty.
60 to 90 to finish the inside?
The insides, but I'm going to be required to also do the public improvements that were developer requirements of moving some land, regrading some land, putting in streetlights, putting the top coat of asphalt, that if we miss that, that deadline for the top coat of asphalt...
Right.
Before the next winter, we're going to have to carve it all back out again.
And two weeks for the permits to come in would put you back that much?
Well, sure, that's, yes. Every day is good for me, and the two weeks, three weeks in the last meeting, I would have loved to stand in front of you in the last meeting, and two weeks before that, I would have loved to stand at that meeting. Every, every day is a, a clock ticking, which is why I'm, I'm here now.
But I guess with that urgency, I, I would have assumed that you would have turned those permit papers in already.
Oh, I was under the understanding that I could not even apply for the permit unless I came before you first because we do not have a, a development agreement in place. Otherwise, I've, I've got those documents ready as well. We can go, we can be there tomorrow morning.
All right, but then, without the building permits, isn't there more of an urgency to get that third agreement and the development agreement done quicker?
Oh, we're, we're going as fast as we can, and I think your city attorney would support that, that notion that we've been working actively on this, correct?
Yes. They submitted a draft of a third amendment a few days before the Fourth of July weekend, and I sent Mr. Bernie my revisions last Wednesday. I haven't heard since then, but I also notified him that I was still waiting for comment from engineering, building department, public works department, as well as community development. I had some initial comments from Mr. Barrera, but not complete comments. So, we will do everything on staff's end and my end to get this ready for this third amendment, ready for the board's consideration and approval on the, on the 28th. That's all I can say.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just to clarify, so I make sure I understand this, the public improvements that you were talking about, we don't have the authority to force him to do that without a third amendment. Isn't that correct?
Well, we have, we've pulled that letter of credit, so we have the money on hand...
Yes.
For that, so...
But we can't turn it over to him...
Right, right.
Because we don't have a third amendment. He has no authority to do the building without that third amendment. As this has been explained to me by staff without that third amendment, he doesn't actually have the authority to do this.
Well, that, that's why he's here tonight...
Right.
Asking for the board...
To just waive that.
...to make an exception to what's been the practice and policy of, of staff.
Would that not be opening us to a whole new precedent?
Oh, yeah.
That we're going to be opened up to a lot of people coming in now and saying, "We don't have that agreement, but we want to get started," and we let them do it, "So, we're only a couple of weeks away, why can't we do it?" Would that not be kind of...
Well, as Mr. Marino said, this is our third failed project that we've dealt with, and the good news is, is that we're on our final one that started and didn't get going. So, there isn't too many of them out there like this. I don't, I can't think of any. So, I don't, I don't know about the precedent setting part of it, but it's the last one where the building got started and got stalled. We finished two of them, we have one more to do, and the gentleman is here tonight to talk about that. You know, it really is, you know, whatever the board wants to do, we can do it either way. If you want to authorize them to move forward, submit your plans, we'll review them. It may be that they'll be ready to go on the 28th when the agreement gets here. They may not be ready. We just don't know what the changes that they're planning to make, and we understand that they're not very major, but minor changes.
Because of the project that it is, I don't, you know, that's fine with me, but you understand that, you know, it's, the fact you're doing work now isn't going to change how we negotiate down the road, right?
Correct.
And so...
This is one of those cases where I have very little negotiating power. Very little.
So...
That's okay.
So, I'm good with that, if, but I want to know exactly what we need now for them to, you know, if we were to go down that path.
Are you going to check and see if all of us are okay with it?
Absolutely. But I think we need to hear from staff exactly what they need now.
I, I think it's...
Then we'll poll the board and see where you're at after we hear the details of what...
Yeah, I think it's very simple. I, I think that Mr. Buckman is just simply asking for the board to give authority to submit his building plans for our review, and if they meet our rules and regulations for the building permit, that we be granted permission to issue that building permit. I think it's as simple as that, with all the fees associated with that. It is undetermined at this point whether or not those public improvements are going to be installed in the next 90 days or whether or not they're going to be installed as the project gets further along. We just, we're in the middle of those discussions, and so we haven't come to a conclusion on those. But this is simply a building that's existing there today that is in a various state of being completed. So, does that make sense?
Well, I, I think he's asking for something a little more than that, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Bernie. You're asking for the board to approve rainy investments and rainy land investments as a successor developer to the, the original developer on this project, are you not?
Mr. Marino, that, that we recognize is coming as part of the third amendment, and we wanted to make you comfortable with rainy investments and answer these questions, but we recognize that, I mean, you know, language, it can't be unreasonable to leave without approval of that assignment. So, I, I think that he meets the very low threshold for being permitted to accept the assignment of the agreement. I, I believe that what the administrator says is exactly what we're looking for with the condition, and there's, all the risk is on us. There are no COs issued on this, we'll sign the appropriate documents, Mr. Marino, completely waiving our rights to a CO, so that, that risk is eliminated. But just to give the gentleman, if he can get satisfied with building permit requirements, let this gentleman get started on, on the interiors. That's, it's a simple instance, Mr. Libero said.
Well, then, it would be appropriate for someone to make a motion to authorize and direct the building department to issue building permits upon satisfaction of all its requirements, subject to receiving a letter from Mr. Bernie's two clients, rainy investments and rainy land investments, accepting all of the risk in not being entitled to any certificate of occupancy on those nine units until a third amendment to the development agreement is approved by the board and executed.
Mr. Marino, do we, I mean, the question was kind of brought up earlier, can we refuse a certificate of occupancy if all the building codes and, and all the criteria has been met?
If we get this letter from Mr. Buckman, from his two companies, waiving that right and acknowledging that all the risk is on his firms, if, if the third amendment is not approved and executed, then I think legally, the village is protected, but we have to get that letter tomorrow if possible.
And that would be a stipulation in the motion, correct?
Yeah, that would be a stipulation in the motion. Now, as a practical matter, as Mr. Libero pointed out, perhaps remote, but it's a practical matter, we, we know from past experience that it's very, very difficult to refuse a certificate of occupancy to a buyer who is, got his furniture van out in front and ready to move in. It's a, it's a practical dilemma.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a question for the petitioner. When are you intending on advertising and selling units? Will you agree to not advertise and not enter in any contracts for sale until everything is done?
Excellent question, and I was...
Because I don't want somebody seeing this in the paper tomorrow and buying from you and saying, "I want to get in there by Labor Day," and then when it comes down to it, because if you ask Pete over the years, how many times has a builder leaned on the building department because it's the village's fault now, because like the mayor said, the moving truck is waiting, we're getting calls at home, it is, it has happened? I mean, so what, what safeguards are you willing to enter into? You're, you're going to be willing to not enter into a single real estate contract until everything is done with the village? I get the point on building, but I also believe you probably want to sell some units as quickly as possible and get some income, but that's going to put burden back on staff and the village here. So, what, what suggestions do you have to, to eliminate that?
Excellent question, and I was actually going to suggest, as I'm hearing the discussion, that I, I'm happy to agree that not a single sales contract or any kind of real estate transaction will be entered into with anyone in the public until after the, the third amendment is signed. And I understand one, one further statement is that, again, I'm not going to be building out the 33 individual lots which make up four more buildings, three buildings, four buildings. That is going to be a builder, and a builder will not go, will not conclude a sale with me, a financial transaction, until this third amendment is, is clean and signed. So, I am highly motivated to continue to, to get that signed, and I have no problem agreeing as part of the motion that A, you'll get the legal document tomorrow waiving any rights for occupancy certificates, and B, no public transactions or contracts will be entered into until after that is signed.
On the nine unfinished townhouses?
Yes.
Because you want us to be willing to enter into a transaction to sell the unfinished product, and we're telling you, "Get calm down."
Well, I'm in contract for that right now, but that, that contract will not go to a close unless I first finish the redevelopment agreement. That's what I mean by I'm highly motivated. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Trustee Sullivan?
No, I, I think that's satisfactory. There is one third agreement that would be put in place, and that would be a hold harmless agreement, forgiving the village for any claims, liability claims brought by third parties like contractors. The village is held harmless.
I see Mr. Marino chatting it down right now. I'm sure he'll be part of the... I just want to say something about Mr. Marino. I did get this to him... I did get this to him on the third of July, and he took it with him, it was hard for me to get it to him. Uh, he took it with him up to Michigan, and it's, he commented on it in time for, uh, the day after we all came back, so, uh, we're very appreciative to him, and we're very grateful for the effort of the board again, and I, I hopefully look at this as, we're both in this together, trying to finish this, this project and clear it up, so, thank you for the time and space.
Does someone want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Sullivan makes the motion?
Second.
Second by Kim, discussion? Trustee Meyer?
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine, I'm fine with, um, putting in the application for the permit, but I think it's another issue on the permit being issued before the Third Amendment. I mean, I can see that they can start the process, put in the paperwork for the permit so that we can see all of that, you know, all of the information, the changes, and all of that, so that they can start the process, but then, wouldn't we not issue the permit until the Third Agreement was completed?
Maybe I missed something. Can't they submit permits now?
Yes.
Yes, they can, submit that information now without anything, okay.
Okay, so that they are able to submit it already. See, that was part of not real clear earlier on what they could and couldn't do. They could, but they haven't. So we haven't seen anything, but we're giving permission to go ahead.
Wait a minute, we've, we've approved the building permits previously for the, you know, the previous owner, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, and they're going to follow those, those plans, as I understand it.
But I heard them say that there're gonna be some changes. All right, so not to the nine units? All right.
Those are the ones that are partially built, you just want to change those plans, and the boards would be permits that were here before were pre-issued.
So there are no changes on the nine units? You're talking that the ones in the future that you're planning to sell to a builder, that those may have some modifications?
Correct.
Okay.
Haven't, haven't our codes changed though, since those nine, and would, what code would they have to follow?
They have, but just by the sheer aspect of the way the building was constructed, they really can't go backwards in time, so I would suggest that we let them continue building on the codes that building was originally permitted for.
And do they just assume the original permits? They don't have to resubmit exactly those plans? Aren't some of the materials maybe not available?
Well, I believe they're working on getting the building plans from the original architect, so they can get the rights to resubmit that same plan under their ownership. So we'd effectively issuing the permit on the exact same plan drawn by the same architect, only they will now own the plans.
So, Mr. Marino, could you read the motion in its entirety of what we are now being asked to vote on?
Yes. It, it would be, um, a, uh, motion, uh, to allow the Building Department to issue building permits for these nine unfinished units, um, prior to the approval and execution of the Third Amendment to the development agreement, upon the owner submitting a written letter signed by Rainey Investments and Rainey Land Investments specifying the following: one, that they're waiving all rights to a certificate of occupancy on those nine units until such time as a Third Amendment is, um, approved by the Village Board and executed. They are agreeing not to enter into any contracts or leases to sell those, or lease those nine units prior to the Third Amendment being approved and executed, and they are going to hold the village harmless and indemnify the, the village against any losses and expenses the village may incur as a result of issuing these building permits prior to the approval and execution of the Third Amendment. So there's those three conditions.
Did you just do that all out of memory? I never saw you look down.
And I will, uh, I will, uh, re, I will remake that motion as stated by, uh, Mr. Marino.
Second.
Well, no, we already did that, though.
Well, I restated the motion. I restated the motion.
We had a first-missed section, so we're continuing our discussion.
All right.
Anyone else? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll. Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Voss?
No.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. So, give our marching orders then, okay? Excellent, thank you. All right, that takes us to public hearings, there are none this evening. That takes us to the mayor's report. Uh, first, we have on the agenda a meeting call for July twenty-eighth, and, uh, we've since found out that, um, not all of us will be here for that evening, so I think what we're gonna do is postpone that, uh, Liquor Commission meeting to another date. We already have that date, I thought, did that go out in an email?
Uh, I think it may have, uh, the date we're looking at now is September, first meeting in September, whatever meeting date that is, I don't have any.
Okay.
Fifteenth?
First one.
Is that the first, uh, board meeting?
It's gonna be earlier than that.
This will be September eighth. Um, yeah, I don't know if, if we had a, here, just a second.
Uh, the first board meeting is September eighth.
And this was put in my calendar as well. Okay, so this would be a meeting call, I'll just change the date then.
Yeah, was there a request of a trustee?
I'll just change the date of this Liquor Commission call meeting for September eighth. Does that coincide with the other calendars? It does on mine, that was, but it's September eighth, let's do that, September eighth Liquor Commission, uh, meeting at six P.M. Next would be another meeting call, now this is gonna be on a Monday night separate from a normal Village Board meeting, okay? And so, um, this would be a committee of the whole meeting on August fourth, two thousand fourteen, at seven P.M., regarding Sunset Lane. And so, um, yeah, just as an introduction, a very brief introduction, Sunset Lane is the road near Diamond Lake, um, and there's a group of investors and owners that wish to, um, uh, build the road and eventually put houses there. And so we anticipate that when we put out the notices to the other residents in the neighborhood, that we're gonna have perhaps a few that want to show up and express their opinions about that project. And so we will have a presentation by the owners of the land where Sunset Lane would be built, and then the houses that would be built, and then, I guess we're gonna put notices out to the local, the residences nearby, uh, to, uh, that we're gonna have a committee of the whole meeting expressed for the purpose of, of, um, hearing everyone's opinions and seeing this presentation on this project.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This will be the third one of these since I've been on the board. Has something changed about the width of the street or the size of our fire engines that makes us think that something will happen differently this time than has happened in the previous meetings?
My understanding is they don't need a variance.
Yeah, we're, uh, early on in the process, but, um, at least I don't recall, uh, at this point, there are a number of property owners down there that have come together to, um, propose that they build this road, and, um, they're asking us what the requirements are so they can go off and get that set up.
How is this different than what we've been through before with them?
I'm not familiar with, uh, ones in the past, other than there's been one or two requests from individuals that wanted to extend the road partway, and we've always said no to extensions of roads, but this group wants to, uh, complete the road from end to end, uh, and build the public improvements that will meet our requirements, um, and that's about as much as we know, and they want to know if they can do it.
Is there, is there sufficient land now? Because my memory before was there wasn't sufficient land for fire engines to make a ra, to do that turn to get down the road.
We don't know if there is. Um, there hasn't been a specific plan for us to review to determine whether or not there's ample, uh, radiuses or ample space to do what they want to do. It's just discussions at this point, and, um, we thought it'd be a good idea for the board to be apprised of this situation, uh, and also to give the opportunity to the neighbors to comment on it. It's a little unusual in that there is no subdivision, so there is, uh, as far as we know at this point, there are no variances being requested. Uh, it seems to us, at this very early stage with lots of caveats, that they could do this by right. Uh, however, uh, there are some concerns.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think they can do it by right. What they need are easements over each other's properties to put the water and sewer lines in, if I'm not mistaken.
Potentially, we haven't seen a, a full, full, uh, plan.
The twenty, the twenty-foot right-of-way is not sufficient to put the water and sewer in and have the necessary separation between them that's required by the state I E P A. Uh, now, part of it could be putting one of those lines under the pavement, which they would need board approval to do. Uh, but it appears that in addition, even if they put one of them under the pavement in order to get the necessary separation, they would need an easement, permanent easement for one of those utility lines, and probably temporary easements for the construction. Now, from what I understand, I think there's thirteen lots, six of them are owned by people who own homes on the other side of the road, who aren't too interested in doing this. Unless all thirteen of, of the owners of those vacant lots between Sunset and the lake agree to give the easement, then if even one of them pulls up, uh, the, the rest of them can't go ahead and do it, unless the village is willing to take the property by eminent domain. So those are the issues that are gonna come before the board at this, at this meeting. It's challenging. Is it impossible? No, not much is really impossible when you come down to it. Should, should, should you listen to them and consider what it is they're asking for? And I, I think so.
So, we thought it would be a good idea to have a separate committee of the whole meeting set aside just for this, because we anticipate it taking more than an hour.
This will be a good old-fashioned Hatfields and McCoys, because we have a great deal of polarization, in my recollection of the subject as it came up in the past, and, um, a very difficult, from a fiscal standpoint, and a political one.
Can everyone make it?
Sure.
Okay, I know Holly can't, okay, trustee Kim cannot, everyone else, can you make it? Okay, all right. So, that's the meeting call for the committee of the whole on August fourth. Um, I already mentioned previously the save the date Village Hall grand opening celebration on September sixth. Now, the time will be, to be determined, to be announced. Uh, we have a committee working on the program for that day, and it's, it's gonna be wonderful. Item D, uh, we are not yet prepared to move forward with item D, and so, similar as last time, I think we just need a, a motion, or, a motion to remove it from the agenda.
Yes, right.
Can I have a motion to remove item D from the agenda?
Second.
Motion by Voss, second by Kim, discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Sullivan? Semple?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Motion carries, so we'll remove item D. And that is it for the mayor's report. Moving on to trustee reports. Okay, Public Works Committee, trustee Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, tonight I have one motion, and that would be a motion to authorize the Director of Public Works and Engineering to execute professional services agreement with R H M G Engineering, Inc., for design engineering services for lift station five and six, improvements, and issue a purchase order in an amount not to exceed forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars, and that would be in your package and exhibit P W dash one.
Motion by Meyer?
Second.
Second by Abernathy, discussion?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Sullivan?
What, what amount is budgeted for this work? Um, I don't recall.
We had eighty thousand budgeted for the designated...
Eighty, all right, thank you.
Anyone else? Trustee Voss?
I would just like to thank Public Works for, uh, keeping this local and using a monoline firm to do this project.
Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And I don't have anything else for tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, Finance Committee, trustee Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening we have one motion, um, for the Finance Committee, and that is a motion to approve the payment of bills to eighteen T on the amount totaling ten thousand, seven hundred, sixty dollars and twenty-three cents, and I will make that motion.
Motion by Sullivan?
Second.
Second by Voss, discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Upstain.
Motion carries.
This evening on our omnibus list of motions, we have a motion to pay bills totaling one million, three hundred, eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and nine cents. Uh, two of the, uh, major items there are our bill for Lake Michigan water to the, uh, Joint Action Water Agency, amount of a hundred and ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars, forty cents. This is a pretty low bill, no one's been watering their grass in the last two weeks, evidently. Um, the second is to Chicago Paving for, uh, street reconstruction work, uh, this in the amount of two hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars, fifty-five cents. Unless anyone has a question in regard to the, uh, finances or a comment, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee, trustee Semple?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As everybody knows, it's been a very busy time since our last Village Board meeting. Uh, there's been a blood drive, our little Fourth of July celebration, police department just had a cops and bobbers, uh, event over the weekend, um, so, shh, let's go with fire first. Chief, you want to, uh, give us an update on what's happened and the update on the tower truck?
Certainly, um, thank you. The, uh, blood drive was extremely successful, we had a hundred and six presenting donors and ninety-six successful donations. If anybody in the general public still wants to donate to that drive, they can go to any Life Source Donors Center and use the code MN, um, from monoline ten, so MN ten, and, um, we encourage people to get out there and do that. This is the hardest time of the year to, uh, get blood donations, and demands don't go down, obviously, there's a lot going on in the summer, you have a lot of trauma and things like that, so, any help would be great, and then... help would be great. And then on the tower ladder front, they continue to do the work on prepping that vehicle. We went back and renegotiated some of the pricing and dropped some of the, actually dropped the price down close to $25,000, and hope to have it here second or third week of August. It doesn't get to the paint shop for some of the other work they were doing in lettering until the end of this month, so sometime beginning of August, we should see that delivered.
Anything upcoming for fire chief?
We will have another drive on September 2nd, so it's right around the corner for the blood drive.
Fantastic. Thank you. Chief Gunther?
Yes, thank you. You mentioned the fishing derby, which was quite successful. I got a lot of positive comments about this year's venue. Hopefully, St. Mary's will have us back again next year. We had a little over 270 little fellows and girls out there fishing, so it was a great turnout. Fourth of July is done, another successful year. We'll get a final report to the mayor's office of Mr. LeBeau shortly, numbers for that. Our explorers currently are at the National Conference in Bloomington, Indiana, Indiana, I believe it's Indiana State University, so they're competing there, and they're very excited. So we sent four of them and two advisors out there this year. This is the first time they've been able to attend the National Conference. They typically attend the state conference, but this one is close enough, we were able to send them this year this time, so they're excited about that. And last national night out is August 5th this year. It'll be at the same location, which is at the church, same venue as Monde Line days. We changed it up a little bit, and we're going to try something different this time. We're going to have a community movie showing on a large 20-foot screen out in the field there. I think it's the Lego Movie, which we'll be showing, and so we hope to get some draw there, and we'll have a lot of activities beforehand for the kids. It'll be a little bit later, since we have to make sure it's dark enough. That's it. Thank you.
Any questions for either chief?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. That is all.
Thank you. Next up, Community and Economic Development Committee, trustee Voss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have several motions on the agenda tonight. Before I get to them, I also have several announcements. First of all, last week was Park Out in Park, which was very well-attended. It's, Park on Park is the second Wednesday of every month, weather-dependent, and I encourage you to come on out. Also, Relay for Life, which was canceled due to weather problems a few weeks ago, has been rescheduled. It'll be July 24th from 5:30 to 8:00 at the Libertyville Sports Complex. Even if you aren't on a team, I encourage you to come, because there will be fundraisers and other ways for you to contribute to a great fundraising event. Also, as a reminder, concerts in the park start at 5:30 on Sundays. We had one yesterday. About 150 people were there. There were some people up dancing. It was great to see. Next Sunday, again, it starts at 5:30, and it'll be a jazz night. This Sunday coming up at Hits Restaurant on Butterfield Road at 1:00, Sean McGrath, one of our own, who is now a professional football player for the Kansas City Chiefs, will be there, and then there is a fundraiser. You can paint a picture with Sean McGrath. It's a fundraiser for Relay for Life. Also, as mentioned, we just had our Monde Line Community Days. It's a way that our community celebrates the 4th of July, as well as all of Monde Line. I want to thank everyone who came and participated, and also all the people who volunteered. If anyone out there was at the event and thought, "Oh, I had so much fun. I would love to volunteer," please do. You can contact Mike Flynn or any one of us, and let us know that you want to volunteer. I do the pet parade and pet trick contest for the community, and I am always looking for help and volunteers. So, thank you very much for that. Also, we have 10 new businesses in town, and in interest of time, I'm not going to announce them all, but they are listed all on our website. Again, we encourage everyone to shop and eat in Monde Line. Let's keep our tax dollars here. Let's support our local businesses, and then we'll encourage more to come. Again, there are 10 new businesses for this meeting. So, with all that said, I have several motions. The first one is I'll make the motion to approve and authorize the village administrator to sign an amendment to the Camero's contract for the sign code for an additional $4,500 of work that was not covered under the original contract, as seen as Exhibit C E D C dash 1, and again, this money will only be spent if we need it. It's just, we're asking for more in case we need additional funding. It will only be spent if we need it. So I'll make that motion.
Motion by Voss?
Second.
Second by Sullivan. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, okay. Trustee Meyer.
Yeah. What exactly are we doing with the sign code? I mean, what did we forget to do? It seems like we keep touching on the sign code all the time, so what, it was very vague.
We haven't finished the sign code?
What didn't we finish?
We haven't voted on any of the sign code.
Yeah, what hasn't finished is that the sign code hasn't been adopted. Throughout this process, we incurred a number of more committee meetings that our consultant needed to do some research for and to present to the committee. We anticipated more drafts, and we originally negotiated, and that has led up to an increase in the original agreed-upon price. And so this price of $4,500 is, again, if needed. The consultant doesn't anticipate that we will get to that amount, but would like the flexibility to have that just in case. Where we are at in the process is that we have reviewed a draft. We are looking for an opportunity to present the draft to the committee next month, and after that we will be going public with it.
Okay, because we had quite a few meetings in the spring, and so then there's kind of been a pause here, and so this is...
There has been a pause, but only really, only to allow the consult ample time to make the necessary revisions, have staff, provide staff the opportunity to review those revisions, provide additional comments, feedback, have additional revisions, and now we're ready to, again, engage the committee, give a high-level overview of those changes, and then we will start going public with the document and leading up to its adoption. If all goes well, we hope to have the ordinance adopted by the end of this year.
Okay, it just seems like it's been forever.
It has been.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up is text amendments to the zoning ordinance. We have several, we're, excuse me, asking for several text amendments, having used the zoning ordinance for a while, either things that staff has found that were omitted or in use, things that have come up that needed to be re-clarified. So, I will make the motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission minutes and findings of fact.
Second. Motion by Voss, second by Sullivan. Discussion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Kim.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, and a lot of feedback. Microphone feedback, although that kind of feedback, too. On, there's number three, four, and five. Three being parking relating to recycling facilities, and the issue was that it was omitted, and so now we want to put this in. My question is, we only have one recycling facility in town, correct? And so is this a regulation that didn't exist, and we are creating a regulation for that one recycling facility that we have in town? I mean, are we trying to regulate their parking, or what was the...
No.
Excuse me. The reason that we created this regulation is because there, at one point in time, there was several interests from several entities that wanted to do a business, a recycling facility, and when we reviewed that, we realized that we didn't have any regulations in place, and that's why you see number three.
And do we need regulations?
Yes.
For where they park? What were the problems we were having?
We just didn't have it.
So we didn't have the regulation was the problem, or was there like cars, you know, parking all over the place and hazards?
Because we only have one facility in our community. That's, we would establish that as illegal, not conforming. But what we wanted to do was, you know, clarify, provide some clarification in the ordinance to provide for language that anticipated this kind of use, and not have a petition go through, an unimpealed process, to identify the appropriate use with the appropriate regulations. So now with this action, if you have a recycling facility that comes in, the regulations are in place, and it just potentially becomes a permitting matter, and that's it. It avoids, it speeds up the process and avoids, you know, a potential appeal.
It speeds up the process, so they don't have to appeal. Does it incur any additional hardship for them to come in and have a recycling facility?
No.
It is my opinion it does not. It facilitates, and again, gets them up and going faster.
Okay, thank you. That was number three. Number four...
Before we go on, can I ask a question about the one we were just talking about? If you're classified as legal non-conforming, is there a circumstance out there that if you do any work or that, that you would then fall out of that legal non-conforming, and then be required to follow the current ordinance?
There are provisions in our ordinance that protect legal non-conforming use, use and its structures. Again, yes, there are provisions that would trigger the elimination of the non-conformity and the compliance of the new district.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Um, I...
Yes. Oh, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Number four, the parking relating to places of worship. Is this asking for a calculation based on if there is worship and a, I don't know, a junior high event, and everything all going on at the same time, that that is what they need to calculate it based on, is the maximum of everything that could be going on at once?
Yes, what we were finding was that we were, in certain instances, breaking the building apart and identifying different activities that were going on within the building, and providing different parking ratios for that. And so what this did was it simplified it and provided one ratio for one across the board through the entire building.
And that one ratio is everything that could possibly be going on at the same time?
Correct.
So does, I don't know, I have to disagree with that one, only because, I mean, so if we asked every place, not only places of worship, to assume, you know, the maximum capacity at your restaurant, or the most people that could be at your school at the same time, in order to have the zoning, I don't know. I'm just wondering, is this on purpose to combat some problem that we already have, or, because I'm not sure why we'd be... Okay, thank you. Why...
Again, the reason that we brought this before is to, what we believe is simplify the matters and to avoid any interested parties in going through a variation process, as trustee Voss has stated. You know, given that we use this document on a daily basis, we from time to time get a number of inquiries, some of them that don't end up coming here before the board, and just some of them that just don't pan out for an assortment of other reasons, but we thought that this was a problem, because in certain instances, when you apply, when you apply the parking standards and start breaking up the building, you have instances where it was just very difficult for anyone to be in compliance, because then the numbers, the parking numbers required were just astronomical. And so what we did was we were finding some common middle ground to provide the parking that was reasonable, without necessarily putting interested party through this, again, this variance process. And so we're constantly looking at ways to facilitate the process, getting these businesses, in this case it's a place of worship, up and running, you know, in a faster way, and again, avoiding this, what could be an eight-to-12 week process. So we did a lot of research to compare other communities, to see what they have, because we realized that we don't have that language in our ordinance. Is it a problem today? Maybe not, but again, we're trying to be ahead of it, and facilitating businesses, and facilitating development, and avoiding these long and drawn-out public hearing process.
Trustee Kim, if I can, you're assuming that this is increasing the, that this is asking them to provide for more parking, and what I think I'm hearing from Mr. Barrera is that's not the case. It's to make it easier
Right.
and faster, and not, and so that we don't require additional parking based on additional uses.
This would have helped Santa Maria when we were building our gym. So this is a good thing, because we went through hoops to be able to have the little parking we had in front of our parish center. This is a good thing.
So it's not a...
This is not a...
Forest require...
No.
All the amendments that we're proposing this evening are an attempt to make things easier, you know, and if there is an opportunity to avoid a public hearing process, we will. But again, before we present these amendments, we, you know, staff does quite a bit of research, starts comparing surrounding communities to see how we fare against what we're proposing, and we bet that all out. And so what you see before you is, you know, that research, that betting out, and that public hearing process to, you know, what we got to today.
How does, I'm just curious, because, you know, I'm wondering, how does it work, for example, like with St. Andrews having their, like, Boy Scout sale or things like that? Is that included in the maximum capacity that...
That's a temporary event. You know, we don't, we don't factor that into the equation. You have events that are just ongoing in certain grounds. You know, you have an event in the parking lot, we just don't consider that. We consider it maybe as part of a temporary event, part of a temporary event permit, and acknowledge that the parking lot will be used, and how that will impact the scheduling of that event with services, but that's really it.
So if there was any church building or that had a youth group night going on, but then had like a younger kids VBS and all that, like, they could still, no one's going to show up and say, "Hey, there's a violation of any sort related to parking."
No, we're not looking to do that.
All right, that's what I wanted to ask. And then number five, parking related to unspecified uses. No general direction on how to assign a parking ratio for uses that are not clearly identified in the parking schedule. Where, where does this, is this talking about anywhere like people's homes, or...
No.
No, this is again, when we did the rewrite of the zoning ordinance, we tried to anticipate with the assistance of our consultant, we tried to anticipate any and all scenarios, but we will have scenarios that would just be obviously missed, missed, or there would be new businesses that are trending and up and coming, and that the ordinance may not have regulations for. And so what we're trying to do, at least in this language, is give the zoning administrator some authority to use some, potentially some discretion in providing the right parking ratios for that type of use, again, and not have that business come through, and for them to go through a public hearing process.
So it has absolutely no bearing on meetings at people's homes?
No.
Or...
No, because residential is already zoned. This is for something that's unspecified. So some new business that comes in that isn't currently in any use that we have now, to say, "Well, if you have this many square feet, you're going to need that much parking." So that it's just done. We're just trying to get it done, done faster, done quicker, with more surety, and that's all that this is about.
Okay.
It's not about something that's already there.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure. I feel like sometimes our, things are very strict, and, you know, here's regulations that didn't exist, and now we're creating more. So I just wanted to make sure, especially being an unspecified use, to clarify what that is. I don't know if you guys know, but there is someplace in one of the Carolinas where they made some sort of ordinance where you couldn't gather more than X amount of people at people's homes, and then they do check things like this. So I just want to make sure it's nothing like that going on here. Thank you. That's all the questions I had regarding this one.
Okay. Well, can I ask a quick question? Just on number one. Can your garbage can be next to your garage in your front yard? That's saying no.
Your garbage can, it's always been no.
Okay, then I, for the last two and a half years, have been out of code.
Unless it's behind something and hidden.
No.
Well, then you're out of code. Thanks for announcing it.
Okay, so I'm against that one, because I have no place else to put my garbage can.
You have to, you have to just put a shield up. It's in the current code. It's always been that way in the current code.
Okay, then the people who owned the house before me also were out of code.
Is that on the side, or actually in front of your home?
It's kind of like, here's the garage, here's the garbage can right there. It's kind of gray area.
Perhaps you want to talk about that with staff later.
Yeah, I guess I will. I'm going to have Public Works at my house giving me a citation.
Public Works doesn't give citations. Wrong department.
Yeah, I know. I just thought, I needed to put Adam in the conversation. He felt left out.
Anything else?
No, I'm done. No, I'm done.
Um, I do have a question. Could you explain a little bit more of the setbacks relating to conveyance of land for village purposes? Somebody?
This language, this language goes to a conversation that was had earlier and the question that was raised by those property owners, Alum Butterfield, and they raised a question of, you know, what if as a property owner you provide, say, land, say, land for an easement, what does that do for my setbacks? Where do you count that setback line? And so this language in part addresses situations like that and the other part really is it addresses situations that we have with, with the proposed improvements on Holly. And do you have, you know, situation whereby, by this land being conveyed for the purposes of right of way construction, what does that do? Do you now provide this, these properties in a nonconforming status? And so this language saying we're not putting you in a nonconforming by, you know, the right of way that you're providing, the easements that you're giving, it just, it provides additional protection to these property owners.
Thank you.
Okay, we are on to item A.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Voss.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Simple.
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations. I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion by Voss, second by Sullivan, discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Simple.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Likes to make a motion to authorize staff to draft an ordinance granting text amendments to the zoning ordinance with respect to all the changes outlined within this staff report as seen as Exhibit CEDC two.
Motion by Voss, second. Second by Sullivan, discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Simple.
Yes. Motion carries.
Okay, moving on, all right. Moving on. We have a use variation at 145 North Seymour Avenue as seen as Exhibit CEDC dash three. Again, we did one of these recently, there, this petitioner, when we did our comprehensive plan, we rezoned this area which has made it very hard for them to find a tenant because they are, would no longer be in compliance. So we're simply asking to rezone this so that it can be used currently for, I guess it's a retail use. So I will make a motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission minutes and findings of fact.
Second. Motion by Voss, second by Sullivan, making sure we understand, are we rezoning?
Just a point of clarification.
Yes, please.
Yeah, what we're looking for is, the petitioner is looking for approval of a use variation, not a rezoning.
Sorry.
So probably retail, retail goods.
And if you could expound, please, on the time duration for this. It's two years, right? We revisit this in two years?
The recommendation forwarded by the commission, by the Planning and Zoning Commission is yes conditional, two years and then after two years, an opportunity to reevaluate this as ordinance, should it get approved.
Okay. And is that anywhere in these motions currently?
Well, the motion, there's several motions, but the last motion is a, is a motion to authorize staff to prepare the ordinance and on the 23rd, we would prepare the ordinance with that, with that condition.
Okay, great, thank you. We're on item A, any other discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Simple.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
I want to tell you thank you. On behalf of the Gumas family, we've been in the community since 1977. I just want to tell you thank you. I'm very excited for the direction where the city is going, just the future of the community and we want to appreciate the whole staff and everybody. They've been more than willing to help us in every facet. I just want to tell you thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Thank you.
Can I? Can you, I'm sorry, can you just give us your name and address?
Yes, I'm sorry, the name is George Gumas. I'm talking on behalf of my mother, Olga Gumas Jakos.
We just need it for the record, the clerk.
I apologize, yeah. I've been working with Victor and Kaline and Amanda throughout the years with the role of rank in the American Legion. We recently took over the property a couple of years ago on a foreclosure and we've extensively fixed all the codes and all the violations in the building. So we want to tell you thank you for all your hard work. We're very excited with the new village hall and the direction where the city is taking.
Thank you.
We appreciate everything, we really do, thank you. You have a nice evening.
Thank you. Okay, so next up is motion, I'll make the motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations.
Second. Motion by Voss, second by Sullivan, discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Simple.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Simple.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Simple.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Okay, lastly, make the motion to authorize staff to draft an ordinance granting a conditional use variation to allow a retail goods establishment in the C5R Downtown Residential Zoning District at 143 North Seymour Avenue.
Motion by Voss.
Second.
Second by Abernathy, discussion?
Yes, I do. I have a question for Mr. Gumas. The, I do get my hair done at Lynette's, I get my hair cut there and the building next to it seems to have garbage bags in the window all the time.
That was taken care of?
For the AA meetings?
Correct, that was recently taken care of. I apologize, I firmly truly left. I apologize, forgive me. We put new blinds, the city had called us and we took care, we put new blinds, we put a new lock in.
Okay.
Again, to answer your question, we took over the building in 2000, end of 2011, we were going to a foreclosure, federal court. For 10 years, we didn't have anything.
No, no, well, I know, I just, there had been garbage bags in there and I'm like, that looks so bad.
No, I appreciate it and we took care of the issue.
Okay.
We put new blinds, put new locks.
Okay.
To answer your question, the storefront, we're trying to get the variance with, we really appreciate your time, was pretty much in a state of chaos.
Yeah.
No drop ceiling, ripped carpet, no tri-wall graffiti, all the units were, you know, we took back the building with intention, wholeheartedly, to listen to all the building departments, the plumbing, the electrical, and we didn't ask questions, what we did is we can do to maintain this building, okay? We didn't make any excuses, no financial excuses, we were more than willing to exceed your expectations because we've owned the building since 1977 to 2002 and we took it back. We actually bought the taxes back because it was sold and it was our honor, our respect because we know where the community came from, where it started. Since age seven years old, I used to be in the parking lot.
Uh huh.
We remember when Ben Franklin was part of the property and the roof was leaking so bad, we were taking pickle barrels from the restaurants you own in Chicago and we eventually remodeled everything with, wholeheartedly, because we wanted to see the community grow. That was our part in the community. So again, we want to tell you thank you. We do appreciate, we're very jamming people, want to appreciate the city from the bottom of our hearts. We do, again, a lot of fundraising for the schools, for Mrs. Wood and the Lake County Regional Education, a lot of their programs. It was our pleasure to be part of your community and we're blessed.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I firmly truly left, forgive me.
Okay.
Anyone else? Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Simple.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You have a nice evening.
Thank you. Next up are text amendments regarding, excuse me.
How apt.
Text amendments regarding regulation of medical cannabis facilities as seen as Exhibit CEDC dash four and I'll make the motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission minutes and findings of fact.
Motion by Voss.
Second.
Second by Meyer, discussion?
Yes, please.
Trustee Voss.
The Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations include a few things that I think should be changed. First of all, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended that medical cannabis facilities be by special use permit instead of just being by permit. We all understand that these facilities will be highly regulated by the state, that whatever regulations we put on top of that, there, the majority of the regulations come from the state and through those state regulations, there's like six locations that you could have a facility in Mondeleine. And so to have and understand that, that those permits will be issued by the state, one, maybe. And so to have that petitioner have to jump through hoops with us and hoops with the state and hoops with us seems a little redundant. And so I'd like to say that if we're going to permit this, we should just permit and it shouldn't be a special use permit. And the other one, and perhaps we should just discuss that one and I'll then go to the other one. Do you want to?
I want it to be a permitted use.
Also, Mr. Sullivan?
I agree that there should not be unnecessary regulation, but a thought occurred to me and that is the request for special use would involve a public hearing.
Uh huh.
Whereas if you just designate in the code an approved use, there would be no public hearing.
Why do we, and so you're suggesting that, that this facility more than say CVS or a Walgreens should have a public hearing?
I think that the, in the view of the public, it might be to you and I that this is no different than a CVS and certainly the CVS sells things that are a lot more effective and chemically active than medical marijuana, but the view of the public is probably much different than that. And so I, I guess I would go with you in that we could avoid a special use application or petition, but you have to understand that that does then take away the public's right to be heard in regard to that use.
Well, we just had two, excuse me, we just had two planning and zoning meetings about this that were public hearings that were certainly noticed and open and no one from the public showed up to discuss it, so.
But it wasn't then proposed to be next door to them or within a certain number of feet?
And it won't be, I mean, it can't be, it's, the state requires, right, a thousand feet, right, from anything residential, it's pretty hunk and far.
Schools, religious buildings, everything.
So when an actual location is brought to us, all right, there needs to be, you know, with the way it's proposed, there would be a hearing and the people nearby that proposed location would then be given an opportunity to address us and be heard. And so at this last hearing, of course, you didn't have a lot of people here, there wasn't a specific location that was in mind and publicized as being on the table.
Yes, but again, it's a very few, very specific sites that are, I mean, and those are posted, they were posted, it was part of the packet of where it could be. It's not near anything residential or any schools and why should there have to be additional hearings for this business, which we wouldn't make for any other business? So I, again, I would propose this be a permitted use in those very few locations where the state would allow it anyway.
And I support public hearings, but I'm just trying to, you know, determine.
I agree.
That even if we had a public hearing, which we've already had several, that I'm not sure how effective that would be because of the state dictates that are already out there.
Okay, so just for my clarification, Mr. Moreno, if we wanted this to be, sorry, a permitted use instead of a special use, we would do that under C, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Cam. Okay, so then maybe we should go ahead with these because, well, and call this question because the other thing is that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended that we require 5,000 square feet.
This first A, we're just simply receiving their minutes.
Yes, so let's go ahead with that.
Let's call that question.
Okay.
Clerk, please take the roll.
Voss.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
You're just receiving the minutes.
Oh, okay, yes.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Simple.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Sorry, and so now we're gonna, I'm going to make a motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations. So again, Mr. Moreno, I'm just accepting these as having received them, not necessarily agreeing with them. Okay, so I'm making that motion.
Second.
Okay, motion by Voss, second by Kim, discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Abernathy.
Yes.
Simple.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Simple.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Simple.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Abernathy.
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 Yes.
I believe that's the only, that those letter designations are the only reference in the ordinance to it being a special use. Is that correct, Victor?
That is correct.
Okay. So I'll make that motion with section replacing, with removing letter S in Section 3 and replacing it with letter T.
In all four places.
In all four places.
Before we make the motion, I mean, were there other areas that? Because I had other questions, I don't know about anybody else.
Well, I thought I had to make the motion first and then we can go back and amend it, yes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I made this motion, if somebody wants to second it, and then we can go back and amend it.
Second.
Okay, so the First Amendment that I would additionally place on it.
Okay, so wait a minute, this is a motion by Voss, a second by Kim? With that motion in place with, now she's, or she's gonna?
With the revisions in Section 3.
Mr. Marino, would you prefer that we vote on this and then discuss amendments? Or?
No.
No.
No, I think she's made this one suggested revision. If there's other suggestive revisions, we can see if there's a consensus. If there's a consensus on all of them, then they can all be passed at the same time.
Have, I don't know that we have completely, fully discussed this permit situation. We haven't heard from everybody. And I'd like to, I'd like to hear from others. I, I'll tell you what.
Could you just let me finish making this motion and we'll get all the things on the table?
No, you made the motion, it's been seconded.
Yes, but we have some other qualifiers that we like to add to it.
That we're gonna have one big vote on.
Yes.
Well, first and foremost, we need to find out if the board wants to make this a permitted use or a special use. I think that's first and foremost.
But we have to do that by voting.
Okay.
But, but.
Well, you can, you can get a consensus from the discussion as to where it's going.
All right, okay, so I think I've heard a majority of us.
I haven't heard from a few. And I'm gonna make another point here, you know, because I've been working with staff leading up to this evening on this. And I know that for many months, starting with the committee of the whole meeting we had months ago, staff laid out a course of action that was not with this permit, but was a special, was a special use, correct?
That's correct.
And we had the meeting the other night and a potential investor in our town came forward and brought up this point that it'd be easier for them to go through a permitted process and thus avoid having the hearing where you could have the potential for residents who maybe didn't like this to then come to the meeting and make themselves heard. I think it's over the top to go this way. You know, the core discussion is separate, but to go this strategy and ignore the work that staff has done in favor of the desire of one of the investors to avoid a public hearing and avoid the uncomfortableness, and it's a lot different than CVS, come on.
No, Mr. Mayor, you weren't at the meeting, first of all. Second of all, I'm insulted by you thinking that I'm doing something based on some petitioner. I'm doing it because that was what my understanding was all along. Lake County has permitted this, not by special use, but by permit. It makes sense to me. I have, I have always thought that this, it's either we're gonna do it or we're not, and if we're gonna do it, then let's just do it. There are really, there are like six places that they can locate this. None of them are near residential, none of them are near schools, none of them are near churches. I understand that you don't like medical marijuana, but if you have ever talked to someone for whom that this is a benefit, it is no different than any other pharmaceutical. And that we continue to treat it like it is, is ridiculous to me. CVS or Walgreens, for whom you think that we shouldn't have these regulations, absolutely has drugs that they hand out that are far more habit-forming dangerous, stronger than medical marijuana.
Trustee Voss, this isn't the issue.
It is the issue.
No, the issue here is you're trying to avoid a public hearing in an age where we have increased transparency in government. We just have a website that came out that's, you know, blowing the top off the score on website and transparency, and that is a core, that's a part of our ethic, it's a part of the culture of this board. And to go the other way on this and avoid a public hearing, it's, it's.
I don't think that we're doing anything.
You're going the wrong way.
I don't, well, I disagree. I don't think that we're doing it to avoid transparency. I think that we're doing it to treat businesses the same. I think that we just had public hearings about this and no one showed up. And why is that?
Because it was July 2nd, the Fourth of July weekend. That's why no one showed up.
Well, we had another one at a prior time to that, and no one showed up at that one. It's because I don't think that people really care. Because this is something that is regulated by the state, that is happening, as our own chief has said. You're talking about this for maybe a couple of years and it's gonna be a done, a done deal and you'll probably be legalized pot in the state anyway. So really, we're gonna make them jump through all these hoops? We don't make alcohol liquor stores jump through hoops?
Yeah, we do.
We don't make them have special hearings.
We have a commission set up just for that, just to remind you.
They have a whole.
We do have a commission, but when they, we don't, we don't post it that we're having a public hearing that this place wants to sell alcohol. You're assuming that a medical marijuana place is going to cause a problem and therefore we should be having special hearings. We have an open mic portion of our meeting, if someone doesn't like it, they should come and express that opinion to us. But having not had that, as we've been discussing this for some time, I'm of the opinion that the public is really fine with this and moving forward. And that's certainly the feedback that I've gotten. And therefore I'm saying, let's just either do it or don't do it, but not put any additional hoops. The state is already making them jump through plenty.
Okay. Should we go around the horn on special use versus permit, if we could, and then we'll move on to the next amendment that's proposed? Trustee Meyer?
I think it should be permitted.
Okay.
Far be it for me to agree with you, Mr. Mayor, but I do feel that it should be special use.
I'll go special use.
I'm obviously permit.
Permitted.
I'm sorry?
She's permitted, I'm permitted, and we're permitted, so we have a majority. Okay, moving on. Trustee Kim, do you have some other things you wanted to add?
When we were given the packet last time, and this was before, I think, it went to planning and zoning, the areas that were yellow that showed where we could have this somewhere far on 60, close to Butterfield, it's since been changed, so it's not commercial anymore and only manufacturing, is that correct?
That's correct.
Can I ask why?
We did some research with the collaboration of the police department, and we found that it was best to have it in industrial, in industrial zone properties. We've also talked to a number of interested parties, and they said they actually would prefer to have it in industrial property, and this does not affect them, that they don't want a commercial presence and they don't, they wouldn't mind being off the beaten
Thinking beyond the three years or whenever it turns legalized, will it then remain only in the industrial areas because that's how this ordinance is proposed?
At least for the time being until we propose additional amendments.
Okay, I would, I don't know, I might be in the minority on this, but I would like for it to be allowed in the original yellow area, which was zoned by some sort of commercial in addition to the industrial, and then let the business owner decide. Well, Victor showed us the areas that were available that were X amount of feet from the schools and places of worship and everything, and that's the area that came out. So are we afraid the Montessori children will go to the dispensary?
Oh, they should be, but then with X amount of feet.
They can't be with, so they can't be? They can't be, no matter whether it's commercial or, I mean, that law, nothing we do will supersede that law, just so that you're clear. So is there support for Trustee Kim's recommendation that this be in the original area of commercial and not just industrial?
But it could be both.
Or are you more comfortable just having it be in the MU, industrial?
To what extent would that change, expand the available areas?
It looks like there's about three dots.
I think up here is the industrial, and this was everything else.
You wanna start on that side while he's considering it?
Would you mind if we get Chief Gunther's opinion on this commercial aspect? This is an important issue because we've had significant discussions around here about this, and I really would like to hear from Chief on this regarding the commercial aspect of this.
We're talking about the commercial aspects of the original thing that staff gave us, not all commercial.
The original allowable areas.
Yes. Does everybody, do you need, I mean, should we make a copy? Do you know what we're talking about?
Well, just, can you articulate exactly what the issue is that you want to change from the motion on the table?
Yeah, so, yeah, it was just the fact that when it was first presented to us, it showed the areas that were commercial and all the areas that were about a thousand feet from, you know, XYZ, and it was any place where it possibly ever could be, that's what was presented to us. And then just at the last meeting, then, it was changed to be only in the industrial. And so if these were places that qualified and we only get one permit anyway, or, you know, how limited it is, why couldn't the business owner decide? Because it's so limited already anyway. And it sounds like, honestly, the business owner wants to go towards the industrial, if that's where they're looking at, but I'm just saying that all of these places were available and met the conditions set by the county. And so I'm just trying to make it more like this is what it was. I don't know why at the last minute it was all changed.
Well, just if I, if I may, and just a point of clarification, the properties that are identified in the map are properties that meet the state buffer requirements. You know, we still haven't done the analysis, quite honestly, we haven't done the analysis, and we didn't do the analysis because we weren't prepared for that part of the conversation is the properties that are remaining, that are commercial, which properties of those meet our own proposed standards? And then the other part of it is which of those commercial properties that are identified in the map are available today? That I could not tell you, because we did the analysis. For those properties that are zone industrial, that meet the proposed requirements that are prepared for you in this ordinance, and we have identified properties that meet all of that, and we have shared that, those properties with all interested parties.
So what you're saying is that perhaps we should move ahead with what we have and we could always amend it to that?
Well, I'm just sharing that, I'm just sharing that bit of information because you're making the change, and I couldn't tell you if by making the change, you now, in essence, make a number of commercial properties qualify, because we haven't had the opportunity to do that analysis and run that. We were prepared with the analysis that we did, based on the language that we put together here before you tonight.
So maybe what we should do is move forward with this, and if it.
I was thinking of far beyond.
Right, in the future that we need to look at additional, then we can always amend this.
That is correct.
Okay, is that okay?
Yeah, I had one other space, question. I just want to confirm that it has changed, so now we, it doesn't need to be standalone, that it can be a multi-purpose.
Multi-use.
Or that it could be like a strip mall or like, it had to be standalone before, so that was.
It started off, yes, it started off, you are correct, it started off as standalone, with discussions with, with the police chief. We did, you know, expand upon that, we did make it into also a multi-use building, but there is a caveat, and that caveat is that they're, they're minimums, and that's where the 5,000 square feet comes into play. And that's what we'll consider the compromise.
Okay, I disagree with the 5,000 square feet, only because that is a very huge space for them to want to do the multipurpose. I mean, it almost seems like it was just like, let's just not let them do multipurpose by making them buy the Best Buy or Target in order to sell.
You know, we've talked to a number of interested parties, and they said that 4,000 to 5,000 is okay, because they're not looking to only dispense, but they are looking to have other offices within there for consultations, for other ancillary type uses that go hand in hand with the dispensaries. So at least from our understanding, this 4,000 to 5,000 square feet seems to work for them.
Well, if 4,000 to 5,000, then maybe we should drop it to 4. And because if you think about like a vanilla box space, if it's 1,000 or 1,200 square feet, then you'd have, you know, how many of them would you have to have?
Sure, what I'm sharing with you is that this number that we came up with wasn't a number that we just made up. We've certainly talked to a number of interested parties and asked their input if it did or did not work. And from the feedback that we received, it does appear to work for them.
Chief, does it make any difference to you if it's 4,000 or 5,000?
We're gonna let them talk.
The, the whole idea and concept behind the 5,000 square foot is similar to the commercial versus the industrial type zones. From the public safety standpoint, nobody, nobody knows what the impact of this is going to be on our crime rates. For us as police officers to be able to keep an eye on things, it makes it far more difficult when we're in a commercial type zone with a high pedestrian traffic. I don't know whether they're going for ice cream, I don't know whether they're going for the Burger King, I don't know whether they're going to the medical marijuana. That was the thought about being in the industrial type zone. That's also the concept behind the square footage, where the standalone would be preferred from my perspective, giving an understanding that that severely limited the properties available. We discussed the multi-use or the multi-tenant buildings, but with the concept being that if I have 2,000 square foot buildings, I'm gonna have eight to 10 of them in a strip mall. If there's a larger square footage, that reduces the amount of actual spaces within that strip mall, if you will, to four or five, just using hypothetical, which again creates a more optimal position for officers and us to be able to view what's going on and taking place. What we do know in terms of crime is, I won't tell you that it's gonna go up, I'm not gonna tell you it's gonna go down, I'm not gonna tell you it's gonna stay the same. Because for every study that I've looked at that says that crime rates will go up, there's a counter-study that says it'll stay the same or maybe even go down. But here's what I will tell you, it's no different than any other business. Let's put it in that perspective. But when you bring in a business, even a CVS or a Target or whatever you want to bring in, it generates calls for service. It generates things that we have to do, even if it's a lockout or even if it's a, just a general call for service. But the fact of the matter is, you have something in one location, and all of the victimology studies and all the criminology classes that I've been to, they all say that there's gotta be three things to have predatory crime. You have to have a victim, you have to have an offender, and you have to have an opportunity. You now have victims in a place, you now have offenders, because the offenders are everywhere, and we've now created an opportunity for there to be a potential for crime to increase. You have drugs that not everybody can get, and you have all cash business. It's still an all cash business. That may change, and it probably will as time goes along, but as it stands right now, it's an all cash business. And everything that it's, that we're looking at says, it's not necessarily marijuana that's the problem, but all this cash in one place presents an issue. We do, from a public safety perspective, have things we need to consider, at least in the short term. And in order to make sure that everybody remains safe, these are the things that we discussed that are better suited for public safety in from that sense. So the 5,000 square foot limit comes in for that particular reason, because it is a larger space, it takes up more location, and it's easier for us to determine what's taking place and who's going where.
Can I just, because this is really bugging me. Victor, you had said that there was, the occupancy could be a mixed use?
It could be a multi-tenant, multi-tenant building.
Okay, so, okay, here's my problem. All I keep envisioning is, we're not gonna have a head shop in town now, are we?
Again, it's regulated by what they can and can't sell, by the state, and there can't be any advertising, and you won't see it through the glass, and we're not talking about it being in a commercial area, in, in a retail area. We're talking about it being in an industrial.
And I guess I just have to ask the question. We're against Dottie's for gambling, the majority of us were against that, we didn't think that was the right image for our town. Now we have medical marijuana.
Yeah.
We really think that's the right image for our town.
Yeah, it shows that we're compassionate, that we understand that this is something going forward, that we want to help to provide a service for people.
Has Libertyville or Vernon Hills or Grayslake adopted medical marijuana?
I don't know, and I don't really care.
They have, have they, Mr. Barrera? Have they, have Libertyville, Vernon Hills, have they gone to special use or have they permitted use? I know they said Lake County has.
Yeah, go with me, I'm looking at my list. Vernon Hills is actually going through their process, but they're leaning towards the special use. Libertyville has adopted it and they want, they want special use. So in my notes here, I have nine, nine communities that have gone, that have already adopted it, they've gone special use.
Special use.
I have 12 others that are anywhere in the process, and they're also leaning special
Just saying, so we're there, I just don't think that that's what we want to be known
So the question now is whether anyone else is interested with Trustee Kim in reducing the. the amount of square footage required.
Well, I have comments on that, too. I mean, if I'm a business, and I can run my business in 3,000 square feet, why am I going to be burdened with having to get a facility that's charged by the square footage, to get a facility larger than what I need to run my business? So, I think that 5,000 square feet is high, for one thing. A little bit concerned with the aspect of harder to watch and view, because if I'm somebody that's gone to a doctor, that has a legitimate reason to get a prescription for medical marijuana, if I'm gonna go to that facility to purchase it, why do I want to be watched and viewed, and feel like I'm being persecuted because I have an illness, and am required or need a specific drug for that illness? So, I kind of have a problem with it being targeted as we want it easier to watch, and being viewed, and feel like, you know, you're being put on a list and being categorized. I think it's unfair to the people that have a legitimate need, and I think the 5,000 square feet is a burdensome requirement, and may pay for, you know, you have to pay for more square footage than you possibly need.
Can we get Chief to weigh in on the watching part?
Well, that's what I was responding to.
Let me clarify, though, I think it was taken slightly out of context, and excuse me, maybe I didn't choose my words properly. I'm not so much concerned with the medical marijuana patients that is going there with their legitimate license for legitimate means. I also think that there might be some legitimate use to this, I'll tell you that right now. But what I am concerned about is when that person leaves, and goes to their vehicle, and then tries to go home. Because understand, that statistically, we're talking about 30,000, at most, people within our county that are gonna have medical marijuana licenses, in a county of 720,000. That's just going out and comparing it to other counties in Colorado, and et cetera. So I'm concerned about those people leaving and going away and becoming victims, because they now are possessing something that the bad guys want. They are possessing either the drug that they just purchased, or they're possessing the cash to purchase the drug, which is also beneficial to people that are looking to do harm to people. So, that's my concern about watching, and being able to determine who's going and where. You know, that's, there are other ancillary concerns outside of just the person that needs it for their illness. I get that. And I don't necessarily want to watch them, but if I can't watch them, then I can't determine who our victims are. And so there comes the watch. It's not the big brother type watch, it's the I-want-to-protect watch.
And I appreciate the clarification, but I still think 5,000 feet's excessive. If I'm a business, it only needs 3,000.
Well, maybe just to help, help out a little bit on the 5,000 square feet, if there's consensus on going the special use, the applicant will have to go through a public hearing process anyways. And so, if, I'm just saying, if it ends up that way, and if an interested party finds a space that's 3,000 square feet, as you're going through the process to go get a special use, they can also seek a variance to get relief, and from the 5,000, get 3,000. That's an avenue.
I'd rather the variance process to go from five to three, than to change from permitted to special.
Lake can always see that, but, do you wanna?
Nope.
No, you're not willing-
This horse is almost dead. No, I have not.
So you, you're not willing to grant fewer feet? Okay. So, Trustee Abernathy, you are not willing to grant fewer feet? Trustee Simple?
Five.
Okay. So, I guess, that that won't pass. So, we should maybe just call the question as it is.
Wait, what about the-
So we have one amendment regarding the special use, we're gonna go to permitted, okay? And there's no other changes, right?
Doesn't seem like we have a majority for them, no.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Yes.
You know, what is the clear benefit to the community besides being nice and allowing this into town? Is there any estimates on how much revenue this could potentially bring to Mundaline? Because I think that's a pretty important piece, too. Because, you know, if we can earmark marijuana revenue for fixing roads, I'd be all, really fine with pot for potholes.
Oh, God.
You know, let's earmark the revenue and put it to, you know, something that we really, you know, we all campaign on fixing roads, let's earmark it for something that's gonna benefit the community very concisely. And what is the revenue? What are we talking, 50 grand, 100 grand? What are the estimates?
I think documents, I think 100 to 150, in that ballpark, conservative.
And we're not, we're not going to be incentivizing any of these, so I'm hoping we're gonna charge, like we would do for a residential home builder, almost an impact fee, some sort of fees that we're going to put, and at what point does that come into the discussion here? Because right now, we're, is it now, is the time for that, or are we just strictly dealing with the zoning classification, and then the other thoughts and rules come later? You know, what's the process here? Kind of new to this thing, I think, this is the first go-around for all of us here.
I think the first process is just, you know, providing the proper land use, and then the next process would be to identify the licensing process, for the licensing and application through the village of Mundaline.
Can I ask the Chief if you have any other things you'd like to say before we vote on this, one way or another?
No, I think you've heard my concerns, I, I think that as long as there's proper restrictions in place, and a way to review these things, that we can make it work. But, that's where the key is, in making sure that there's proper restrictions, and that it's looked at closely, so that it doesn't get out of hand.
And what kind of additional costs could there be? You would mention the budget process, by allowing medical marijuana, you potentially would need a canine unit, drug sniffing, so there are potentially additional costs that you and the village staff are going to incur, that I'm assuming we're gonna take into consideration at some point, too, correct?
Well, at this time, I think it's just important that the board understands that these decisions come with staff requirements, and staff burden, no matter how you slice it, whether it's from the licensing process, from the enforcement and checking process, because, you know, the state regulates liquor, and it regulates tobacco, and it regulates a lot of other things, that ultimately end up falling upon us to determine that it's done properly, and the checks, and the balances. So, you know, this is, it comes with cost, and there could be some, some potential requests in the future, just as you mentioned, in the form of personnel and/or equipment, that we would be making. But, again, those would be, we'll have to see where that goes in the future, and, but that is a strong potential for those things to be there.
Well, knowing that we've got these other things to discuss, I'll go along with this motion.
Okay.
Could I ask one more question?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to ask, how many industrial buildings do we have available that are 5,000 square feet or more?
We have identified two that are, that meet these requirements, and that are available at the time that we did the research.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Two, which is again, two, which is again, why I don't think we need to have a special use permit, we only have two. Okay, so we have a, a motion and a second, the motion being amended.
Do we know what that amendment is, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other discussion on this? All right, Clerk, please call the roll.
Boss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
No.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. With that, my, I'm all done, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Communication and Marketing, Trustee Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything specific from the marketing department to add, aside from the fact that the branding campaign has launched. There were banners on the parade floats, and around town, put on the lamppost. Let's see here, there also is, I just want to give an update on some of the committees that you've put me on, that there is a, oh, hold on, the system, gotta look it up in a separate window. For the Police Statute Fund, that Tavern on 60 Restaurant has, is hosting a golf outing, and the proceeds will benefit Noonan Syndrome and the Mundaline Police Statute Fund. And that's gonna be Thursday, July 31st, 11:00 a.m. check-in at Countryside Golf Course, and so if anyone has a question, they could contact Phil Gilardi over at Tavern on 60. They're looking for hole sponsors, and it's $125 per hole, and it's $100 per person to play in the golf outing. In addition to that, I'm also on the utility box art committee, and just an update on that, all three boxes have been painted, and they were available there for our Mundaline Days Festival, so I hope everyone kind of got to tour around Seymour and check them out. We'll be working in the future to have an online survey, so that we can get some feedback from the community about whether this pilot program should continue, and, you know, just their impression of this.
Can I just, just wanted to say, I think the utility boxes look fabulous, I think they looked really good. And also, you mentioned the banners for the branding program. I just would like, I think there might have been some miscommunication, in the future, maybe, if you are, know that these are coming out, maybe check with us and make sure that purchases haven't been made by the trustees for things such as the banners for the cars, because we got informed two days before, and I couldn't use mine, so I would have not had, you know, I would have said, "Don't waste the money buying them for me." So, our input was never asked. So I think when, maybe when we do that, maybe if you could let us know?
Sure, I think the department staff could email and let you know.
A little earlier than two days before?
Sure.
And that they're already bought?
Yeah, I think that came up, actually, in one of our meetings that we voted, no? We didn't vote to pay those? I thought we voted to pay half.
No.
Okay.
No, it never came up.
Okay. So you want notice of banners-
If things are being purchased for us.
For you.
Yeah, let us know.
Okay.
Maybe we don't, you know, need that expense.
Okay, I'll let, I'll let them know.
Thank you.
Also, I had a quick question to Mr. Lovato, on some of the banners that we had purchased, I'm just asking because I'm curious, but some of them were for the farmer's market, and things related not to the Village Board, but MCC, in which case we gave them that grant slash stipend, and so I was wondering about this additional cover.
All I can say is that we have, since the farmer's market's been around, we've been buying banners for them. So, I think we just updated some banners this year. Is that right?
Well, you know, they're already made and they're put up, but probably for the future, I would prefer, I mean, we gave them $30,000, so they could-
Buy their own banners.
Well, you're saying buy their own, but this is a community event, and everybody benefits by it, and it's all part of the branding, trying to get this new logo and image out there, and that was part of the signage for the convertibles for the parade, was the similar branding, so every, so, you know, if the trustees can't endorse the branding, and put the new logo out there, shouldn't it start here? I mean-
But the person that I was borrowing their car, did not want me putting command strips on their car, I can't make him do that.
Yeah, understood. Are you all set for next year?
No, because I'm not using command strips.
I don't see any problem with supporting the farmer's market or other community events like we've been, none.
The branding initiative has the new logo, and it's a bit different than the farmer's market banners that are out there, which show food or a vegetable, and no sign of the star, and it's separate, it's of, it's as though if we put up banners for Mundaline Soccer Club, or Village Homesteading Mundaline, what I'm saying is, just because they are a community event, doesn't necessarily mean we need to cover their banners when we gave them $30,000 already. It's not a popular opinion, I'm gonna admit that, but I was just noting it, because, you know, how often do we need to buy those banners, anyway? So let's keep that in mind for next time.
I'm actually in agreement with Trustee Kim, that I would not like to see anything else purchased from Mundaline Community Connections without being brought to the board, since we have already given them money, that we don't give, I mean, Mundaline Little League does, it's a huge community thing, and it does a lot for the community, and we don't supply anything, banners for them. AYSO has lots of programs in our community, and we don't supply banners for them. Trustee Kim's involved in Mundaline Homesteading, and we don't supply banners for them. They're all community events, and they're all community projects.
I assume that, yeah, I understand that, if the board doesn't want us to make any purchases for the MCC board without prior authorization, we'll make sure that that happens. But I, just for clarification, I assume that you're not talking about the time commitment from the staff, I assume that you want to continue.
Perhaps this is a discussion that we should have on another evening, as this is already running late, and we have lots to do.
I can put it on future agenda, and you can, we can maybe put something, have them talk about it.
Okay.
Maybe another board meeting, or committee, the whole, we'll put it in.
Sure.
We can revisit that, that'd be fine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Next up, Transportation and Infrastructure Committee, Trustee Abernathy.
This is really good, because mine doesn't have lots of discussion. Okay, number, just two things here, authorize Gualt, Hamilton, and Associates Incorporated to proceed with engineering plan separation, and invoice Lake County Division of Transportation directly for such services, as seen in Exhibit T and I-1.
Second.
Motion by Abernathy, second by Trustee Meyer, discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Trustee Sullivan.
Made me a liar.
This plan is to separate the Harley Street Improvements into two phases, because of delay, well, we've been talking about this for two years, we seem to be at the end of the rainbow, in regard to acquiring the right of way, that's the additional right of way needed. Why now, do we want to split this into two phases?
Yeah.
This was at the request of the county, and I think the county does not share our optimism regarding land acquisition.
Did they have a conversation with the governor, that he's not gonna sign the quick take bill?
That I am aware of.
No. Well, I think he is going to sign it, and how soon then, after the bill is in force, can we take the title and possess the right of way that's needed?
Well, that gets where it gets a little gray. There is a process through the eminent domain, we have no knowledge that the governor's not gonna sign the quick take authority or legislation, so I think that's gonna happen. But, there could be some delays through the court proceedings, at least time delays, and I think the county is, their thinking on this is that, because of this two-year, kind of, it's not a delay, it's just been a long process, that you could get started. I think we've confirmed that we could move forward with the public utilities without any further easements or land acquisition. And, in that case, this project could get started, and it may make some sense to separate the two projects, but we were unwilling to do that, as Mr. Rocher put in his memorandum, because of the added cost. And so, they've agreed to pay for that additional engineering cost, so, at this point, you know, we think it may make some sense to separate these two, to get this project moving, and it may actually help, in the long runs, a long run, with the timing. But we want to make sure that it doesn't come at an additional cost to the village. And I don't know if- to the village. And I don't know if we'll really understand that fully, Mr. Boucher, until maybe we put it out on the street, or at least have pretty good understanding of what that additional cost might be.
That would be correct.
All right. Well, if the county wants, you know, wants it to happen, I wouldn't disagree with them.
Anyone else? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. I just have one more. A motion to approve the mayor and village clerk's signature on the Lake County Department of Transportation municipal utility acceptance on a county highway form to construct water main replacement in the Midlothian Road and Winchester Road right-of-ways, as seen on TNI-2.
Second.
Motion by Abernathy, second by Kim. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. I just have one more. A motion to approve the mayor and village clerk's signature on the Lake County Department of Transportation municipal utility acceptance on a county highway form to construct water main replacement in the Midlothian Road and Winchester Road right-of-ways, as seen on TNI-2.
Second.
Motion by Abernathy, second by Kim. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Trustee Meyer, item C.
Yeah. And the reason I wanted to pull it off is so I could highlight some key dates that we've talked about. This is, you know, an opportunity to set up a committee to determine the disposition or make some recommendations for the disposition of village hall. And so, what we're going to do is accept applications for that until July 31st. And then, there'll be interviews that will take place at the beginning of August, and it is the hope that we would be able to appoint those committee members August, at the August 25th meeting, and then have a kickoff meeting in September. So, I wanted to kind of highlight those days. And the important one is that we'll accept applications until July 31st. So, if you want to be considered for this committee, please submit those applications prior to that date. So, that's really the only reason I wanted to pull it off.
Okay. You want to make a motion to pass it?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to pass an ordinance establishing the Village of Mundaline, Village Hall Study Committee.
Second.
Motion by Meyer, second by Kim. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That's all I have to report.
Okay. Very good. Village Attorney, Mr. Moreno.
I have no report, Mayor, but I understand there is a need for an executive session regarding personnel and land acquisition.
Correct. Okay. We will have an executive session. Now...
Break.
Are we going to break and go in there? Okay. We'll break and go in there. All right. Village Clerk?
Yes.
Very good. Okay. This takes us to the, okay, now, let me get the items right. So, this is going to be land acquisition. That's it?
Personnel.
Personnel, there it is. Okay, got it. Okay. So, I need a motion to recess into executive session to discuss land acquisition pursuant to 5 ILCS 120, Section 2C5, and personnel pursuant to 5 ILCS 120, Section 2C1. Motion by Boss, second by Kim. Discussion? Clerk?
One, just, are we going to take any action afterwards?
No.
Okay.
Other discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Boss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That's all I have to report.
Okay. Very good. Village Attorney, Mr. Moreno.
I have no report, Mayor, but I understand there is a need for an executive session regarding personnel and land acquisition.
Correct. Okay. We will have an executive session. Now...
Break.
Are we going to break and go in there? Okay. We'll break and go in there. All right. Village Clerk?
Yes.
Very good. Okay. This takes us to the, okay, now, let me get the items right. So, this is going to be land acquisition. That's it?
Personnel.
Personnel, there it is. Okay, got it. Okay. So, I need a motion to recess into executive session to discuss land acquisition pursuant to 5 ILCS 120, Section 2C5, and personnel pursuant to 5 ILCS 120, Section 2C1. Motion by Boss, second by Kim. Discussion?
One, just, are we going to take any action afterwards?
No.
Okay.
Other discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Boss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That's all I have to report.
Okay. Very good. Village Attorney, Mr. Moreno.
I have no report, Mayor, but I understand there is a need for an executive session regarding personnel and land acquisition.
Correct. Okay. We will have an executive session. Now...
Break.
Are we going to break and go in there? Okay. We'll break and go in there. All right. Village Clerk?
Yes.
Very good. Okay. This takes us to the, okay, now, let me get the items right. So, this is going to be land acquisition. That's it?
Personnel.
Personnel, there it is. Okay, got it. Okay. So, I need a motion to recess into executive session to discuss land acquisition pursuant to 5 ILCS 120, Section 2C5, and personnel pursuant to 5 ILCS 120, Section 2C1. Motion by Boss, second by Kim. Discussion?
One, just, are we going to take any action afterwards?
No.
Okay.
Other discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Boss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.